Welcome to the regular board meeting of the San Benito Consolidated Independent School District Board of Trustees. Today is Tuesday, May 18th, 2021, and I call this meeting to order at exactly 5:31 PM. Roll call. Ms. Janie Lopez.
Present.
Mr. Oscar Medrano.
Present.
Mr. Rudy Corona.
Present.
Dr. Ariel Cruz.
Present.
Mr. Orlando Lopez.
Present.
Mr. Mario Silva.
Present.
Dr. Nate Carmen.
Present.
Mr. Tony Torres.
David Flores is present via Zoom.
Mr. David Flores, thank you, sir. And myself, Ramiro Moreno. We have established a quorum. Moving on to item 1.2, Pledge of Allegiance to the United States and the Texas Flags. Mr. Medrano?
Leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance is Isaiy Nathaniel Martinez from Miller Jordan Middle School. Isaiy Nathaniel Martinez is an eighth grade student at Miller Jordan Middle School. He is the son of Santiago Enmara Martinez. His favorite hobbies are playing football and spending time with his dog, Cleo. Isaiy's favorite subject is science, and he takes pleasure in doing experiments and anticipating the outcome. Since attending MJMS, he has participated in football, basketball, track, and choir. Outside of school, Isai participates in his local church by playing the congas during praise and worship. Isai plans to become a sports commentator. Go Cougars!
Awesome.
Leading us in the invocation from Berta Cabaza is Kimberly Rachel Reyes.
Everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. We'd like to recognize you. Thank you very much for being with us today. We're very proud of all your accomplishments. If you'll start over to my right with Mr. Rudy Corona, we'd all like to give you, provide you with a certificate and recognize you for being here today. Congratulations. Thank you for being here, and we appreciate you, and here's a token of our appreciation. Thank you.
Leading us in the invocation is Kimberly Rachel Reyes from Berta Cabaza Middle School. Kimberly Rachel Reyes is a seventh grade student at Berta Cabaza Middle School. She is the daughter of Pablo Junior and Ruth Reyes. She plays the alto saxophone as a proud member of the Great Pub Band. During this pandemic, Kimberly was a member of the Berta Cabaza Battle of the Books team that earned first place in the district's middle school division. She also earned first place in the annual Berta Cabaza Science Fair and received honor roll recognition. Kimberly enjoys drawing, cooking, playing music, and spending time with family. She enjoys helping people in need and practicing her Christian faith. She plans to become a kindergarten teacher and make a difference in the lives of children.
Will everybody please stand for their invocation?
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we are gathered here this evening thanking you for your mercy, protection, and love. We ask for your blessing on every family of our great district. Lord, show us your favor and give us peace. May you bless everyone with goodwill, self-control, and discipline. Let your angels encamp around and guard us. We ask that you always give us wisdom to our superintendent, board of trustees, administrators, teachers, and all district employees to make the right decisions. Make your infinite grace help us to always be united with the same thoughts and the same action. In the name of Jesus Christ, we pray amen.
Kimberly, we're very proud of your accomplishments. Thank you for being here with us tonight. Beautiful invocation, and by the same way, we'd like for you to come around so that our board members can recognize you as well for being here today. Thank you so much. Congratulations. We wish you much success. There you go. Thank you. Thank you so much for both our students, parents. Thank you for bringing them here to us today. We appreciate all you do, and we wish your students much success. Thank you. We have several public comments today, so we will begin with a public comment by Mr. Adán Oseguera. He is referring to agenda item 3.1. Mr. Oseguera says, "Thank you, Superintendent, Board President, and Board of Trustees for your time and the opportunity for my comment to be heard. Congratulations to the new and returning members for winning their elections." Item 3.1, Request Approval to Accept Gifts Bequest for 2020-2021 School Year. Although the donation from Mr. Musk is appreciated, it is important that this substantial amount of money and future donations do not infringe on the independence of SBCISD. No dollar amount should buy Mr. Musk influence on our curriculum or an unofficial seat on our board. That's why I was happy to hear that this first installment will be used to purchase technology for our teachers. I hope future installments will also be used to invest in our district from the bottom up. Item 5.2, Mr. Oseguera says, "I'm glad to see this policy is back up for discussion and ask the board to strongly consider approving the proposed revision. For members new to the board, this policy was revised in the past after criticisms from members of the public, many of which were in regard to an unfortunate situation with a former board member. Public comment used to be open to allow for any comment, concern, criticism, or praise from whomever wished to speak. As the policy currently stands, comment is restricted to only items on the agenda. The main justification given for the change was too much negativity, but this didn't make sense because nothing new in the policy addressed negativity. All it did was silence the people of San Benito by limiting what they could immediately bring to the board's attention. As public figures elected by the constituents of San Benito, you all should welcome hearing from the people that you represent. Public comment needs to be simple, easy, and accessible. Restore the community's voice." Mr. Oseguera, thank you for your public comment. Next public comment is on agenda items 5.2 and 5.7. This is from Ms. Mary Maney. "Dr. Carmen and board members, my name is Mary Maney, and I am a teacher at San Benito High School. Thank you for taking the time to listen to my comments about agenda items 5.2 and 5.7." Agenda item 5.2. "I know that this has been a hot topic for the last two years, and I am glad that it looks like you have come to a decision on what can be addressed in public comment. I do have a concern about the revision that has been published in board docs. As of 2:00 PM this afternoon, the revision allows for comment to be made on any topic, but it only imposes a time limit on those topics that are on the agenda item. I am hoping that this is just something that was overlooked when doing the revisions. I hope that all future meetings under this revision will be of the gold standard quality that is expected of all our students, faculty, staff, and administration." Agenda item 5.7. "I like the trifold as it lays out the SBCISD board procedures in a very informative and easy-to-follow format. I do have a couple of concerns with regard to the changes to the media inquiry section. Making all board officers official spokespeople in addition to the board president has the potential to be a problem if all the officers are not holding the same position on a concern that is being questioned by the media. Also, who determines if the matter being addressed needs to be brought to the superintendent's attention? I have some concerns about San Benito being of two or more opinions when it comes to matters that concern the district and our community. I hope that my fears are not something that could come to cause SBCISD to get an image of a board in conflict. Thank you for your time and consideration. Mary Maney, San Benito High School teacher." As always, Mrs. Maney, thank you so much for your public comment. The next agenda item comes from Ms. Rosalinda Garcia on agenda item 5.2. "On or about 2019, the school board took a turn and began to restrict public input by placing public comment at the end of school board meetings. The district also discontinued a working relationship with a local newspaper which included advertising, comments regarding board events, and even notices for the public. Most recent, a present sitting board member reminded the community why he was against all public comment. He was not going to allow another board member selected political group expressing their Are some of the present board members going to vote against revision of BED Local because of another board member's views or others that speak, not positive individuals? Are we tainting the community, or are we making a mockery of the district? Or because, as a former board member stated, tired of hearing the same topic over and over? Are you going to vote for BED Local to stay as is or follow other districts that still permit all public comment? Other districts don't restrict their community voice. Vote not to limit someone's voice, but rather encourage community participation." Ms. Garcia, thank you for your public comment. She continues with a public comment on 5.5. "As a community member, I appreciate the board's swift action and authority under board policy BDD Local for the consideration and possible action regarding the district's legal services contracts with A) Flores and Torres LLP, B) Ohanlin, Demereth and Castillo PC, C) Rorick, Oliveira and Fisher LLP, and D) Thomas Rayfield. Does the current board trustee have a personal relationship with an attorney from one of the law firms up for discussion? Does the current board trustee have a past business partnership with an attorney from one of the law firms up for discussion, and was that partnership ever disclosed to the board or the district? To Mr. Flores, thank you for your services and assisting our district and board members. My best wishes to you." She continues with 6.1. "Morale really takes a low when a board member's family is promoted such as positions to principal. Just abstaining from voting for a family member does not seem to be in the best interest of family." Once again, Ms. Garcia, thank you for your public comment. Next up, we have public comment. The name of the person submitting is Andrea Gonzalez. The agenda item, BDD Local, Terminate and Replace Attorneys. "Today's actions by this new board majority should send warning signs across the entire San Benito CISD community. There are so many agenda items today that are problematic and expose this board majority's power grab, lack of understanding for board policies, and just outright incompetence. Where was the transparency in this process to retain general counsel? This is what this board majority ran on, didn't they? It is outright hypocritical and goes to show how they campaigned on a fake promise and are already showing it with their governing decisions today. There was no teamwork in this decision. There are several questions that should be asked when looking at this move. When did this meeting take place? Who was there? Who negotiated this on behalf of the board? Keep in mind, this is a body of seven, not a body of one ego, and there are no requests for qualifications to review. Was this done as a walking quorum? I'm sure unethical text messages or emails can show this. Again, this should serve as a telltale sign and a warning for everyone who voted for liars. This agenda is filled with everything but transparency. Was there a reason to do this, or is it purely political? And one of the other biggest issues this board majority complained about during the campaign trail was about businesses going to Hidalgo County. This new legal firm is based in Travis County in Austin and has an office in Hidalgo County. There are no words for this type of behavior. Where are the so-called watchdogs now?" Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez, for your public comment. And finally, we have one more public comment for tonight, and this comes to us from Diana Garcia. And this is in reference to agenda item number 5.6. "On Tuesday, May 18th, 2021, at 2:13 PM, Diana Garcia wrote, 'Ladies and gentlemen of the school board, my name is Diana Garcia, and I'm a San Benito CISD taxpayer. I'm very, very concerned on all these sudden changes going on in our school district. For one, what is the sudden urgency to do a budget training? This has never been an issue of concern. I understand we have capable personnel to oversee these kind of issues. There is no need to start spending money with issues that are not important. Ms. Vice President, correct me if I'm wrong, but were you not the one concerned with taxpayers' money being misused? Now, all of a sudden, you want to spend our taxpayers' money in a useless training. Region One and TASB both offer this training at no cost to the taxpayers. We have the financial director who is capable of doing that very same training at no cost. I can't stress enough how concerning the reason is on spending our taxpayers' money when it is not necessary. I respectfully ask that you use your better judgment when spending our money.'" Ms. Garcia, thank you as well for your public comment. That concludes public comment for tonight. We move on to agenda item 2.1, Superintendent's Report, Overview of Frontline Usage for Timesheets, Training, etc. for Hourly Employees. Dr. Carmen?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Moreno. We have directors from Transportation and Maintenance Department who want to give an overview of how we use the frontline program with our timesheets, the training that's provided, and so forth for hourly employees. So if they are ready, they will begin a presentation. There's one. And two. Good evening.
Good evening. President of the Board, Dr. Carmen, and board members. I believe before you is a copy of the payroll training sessions. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Let me give you a little background on the payroll training session. It was actually developed by our department secretary. My secretary created this in English and in Spanish in order to make it aware and fully accessible to our team, our drivers, and our monitors, our mechanics as well. Creating a training like this gave everybody the knowledge to be able to learn how to do this on their own, and we do provide assistance when they're asked for it. So we took the initiative also to educate our team on how to submit this training through their phones, so they're able to access it either computer, the iPads, the laptops, or their cellphone. We have three desktops available for them, three mobile laptops, 10 iPads with mobile hotspots, and we also do trainings on Insurven States the beginning of the school year and throughout the year in the times when we have new employees, in which we invite everybody to come in and sit down with the new employees and get a refresher course. Sorry. Furthermore, our department secretary also takes care of our finances. She does submit requests for purchase orders, pays our bills, invoices, takes care of our fleet, our inspections, our certification for bus drivers, certifications on their driver's license, sorry. And our department secretary also makes sure that we have fuel. That's very important. So she also takes care of our fuel. I'd like to thank you all very much. If you'd like for us to go over the training sessions, it's 45 minutes long, so just let me know if you want us to do that or do it some other time. Thank you very much for your time. Mr. Perez?
Thank you, ma'am.
I don't think I'll be using the clicker. Good evening, everyone. I'm Mr. Perez. I'm the maintenance director. For those of you that don't know me, I'll introduce myself briefly. I've been now with the school district for about almost eight months. I've learned quite a bit. I've been obviously in the trenches with our own folks. So very similar to what Martinez has talked about, first of all, thank you, Ms. Moreno, President, Dr. Carmen, for allowing me the opportunity to talk to each one of you. I think it's imperative that we kind of talk a little bit about our folks, what they do on the ground. There's lessons learned, obviously, that we have throughout our district, one of which, obviously, she's already alluded to, and is that training. As you guys very well know, not everyone is tech savvy, and because they're not tech savvy, we have to make things that are accessible to them. So one of the items that we've done, at least for my department, and I'm sure she's done the same thing, because I've seen her department, is developing training modules, one of which I'm using. So I always believe not work harder, but smarter. They've already produced the items that they have presented here, which is how to request the offs, particularly leaves. Not everyone has a computer accessible to them, so sometimes I use secretaries for that process. But at home, I'm sure there's some of them that I've talked to already also do the same. They use their family members, sons, daughters, what have you, to make it easy for them to do their weekly submission of leaves or timesheets. Very important, obviously, because we want our employees to get paid. So what I did during my tenure, I looked into assessments initially, so I looked at what things that I needed, the resources that we have already internal to our areas, which is computers. So I used the IT office to give me 25 iPads to be able to train and develop our folks. So in essence, during the year, you very well know that we can't train them every day because they're working and doing the work of servicing our district, of cleaning, disinfecting each day, so I just can't take them out and train them. So what I'm using is during the summer. I have dates that I've already scheduled during the summer because there's no students and there are no teachers, so it gives me a little time to give them the good training they need, using the slides that Ms. Martinez has already provided to me. And not only that, but I think, again, it goes back to not only developing an area, but the training room. We already have a training room, two computers in them. We've had them for a long, long time, even prior to me arriving to San Benito. Also, there's three laptops that I can use. One is a personal laptop that's been assigned to me and assigned to my two secretaries, which, by the way, they can also utilize to do the training. Received all the training plans that she has, I can guarantee you we can get on top of this with our folks. I don't see a challenge other than the fact some, you know, we have mature folks in our environment that sometimes they don't want to learn, right? And let's be honest, some of them that don't, we'll help them. I think that's what we're there for. We're in a service community, and to service our own folks, I don't think it's the wrong thing to do. And for those that have problems, we're there, and we've done that. I don't think there's been an issue across, at least for our venue, but unless, I think this right here, what's been developed is going to help us to get better and help our employees be better. And with that, that concludes my presentation. Thank you, Dr. Carmen, for allowing us. New board members, welcome, and I look forward to any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Perez. I have a quick question for Ms. Martinez. The reason this training was initiated in your department, were there procedural concerns specifically with time adjustments that had to be addressed? And if so, could you elaborate on those to the board, please?
Yes, we found that there was practices that shouldn't have been happening. They were sharing their username and passwords, and that's against the computer usage policy. So I had our secretary come up with a, I challenged her actually to create a training in English and Spanish. I like to challenge my staff into new things so they can move up, and actually, it motivates them to want to be able to do something new and get them out of their comfort zone and do something different. So she came up with the training, and we do conduct this training. Every time we have a new employee, we invite everybody to come in, and they'll sit in there again, get a refresher course. She also took it out of her way to create it for the cellphone, so now they have, they can do it off their cellphones, or they can use any of the three computers we have. We also have 10 new iPads with mobile hotspots. They can check it out at dispatch and submit their time, ask for days off. Yes, sir.
Great. And she did a good job with the screenshots and everything. It's very comprehensive. Were there issues also with blank forms being signed?
Yes, they would submit the, they would just sign the blank form for time corrections, and somebody else would fill it out for them and submit it to the secretary. Yes, sir.
So by following this process, that's been taken care of?
Yes, sir, and I do not sign them unless it's actually been handed to her, and she's fully aware that that person is the one that filled it out. Sometimes they fill them out in front of her to make sure that they didn't miss anything, and then I sign them after the employee has signed them, and then she does the corrections and before it was done different.
Great. Thank you, ma'am.
If I may ask as well, ma'am, regarding these blank forms being signed, in your professional opinion, why do you think that was being done, and what else has been done to prevent that from happening again?
The blank forms are available to the drivers. They are in the lounge area. I do not know the practices from my predecessor before, but when it became to my attention, I made aware of it, I changed that policy to where they have to make sure that it is that person that has signed it. That's why they usually sign in front of our secretary.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Mr. Perez, as well, for taking care of our employees and helping them out and making their job a little bit easier. And like you all said, right, they spend a lot of time outdoors, outside of the facilities, outside of the offices, so I think that this is great that you all did that. I've heard a lot of great things, especially from the Transportation Department, a lot of big changes that you have made that have helped improve your department as well from the very beginning. I've heard a lot of great things about your department, ma'am, so thank you very much for taking care of the staff. And, Mr. Perez, you as well.
Thank you. It is my pleasure to serve. Thank you.
And I do have a question on the frontline, since we're looking into that program in buying that license again. Do you feel that it's something that your staff is able to use easily without any issues? Do you recommend that we do purchase it again?
Most of our staff, ma'am, I could say that about 98% of our staff already knows how to use frontline, and changing it would just, we would start all over again. So our staff, 98%, already does it by themselves. The other 2% will ask for minimal assistance. It's the same ones, but we're there. I have trained my staff that we're a customer service base center, and we're here to serve. And that's all SBCISD community, including our staff. Yes, ma'am.
And I like to hear that because I used to be a bus student too, so the bus driver was always the first one that I would see with that nice smile. And what about you, Mr. Perez?
Well, I do agree. I think the frontline is a tool. Obviously, we have several tools, you know, Skyline or Skyward is one of them, and so is frontline. Those are two big tools that our folks use. There are some challenges, obviously, with our folks. They are new. So what I've done, and in addition to this, is what I've done is every person that comes through our office, I keep them for at least a week. And the reason is, is before I send them down to each of the areas, they at least have knowledge, instead of getting lost into the trenches, so to speak, because if you don't give them the heads up and being one of the frontline, it's an easy tool, but again, it goes back to having access to it and be able to teach them upfront, I think it helps. So that's what I've done, and I'm sure that, you know, she does the same thing that you just mentioned. I like it, to be honest.
Thank you very much for that, sir.
Yes, I got a comment to make. First of all, I want to thank both of you also very much because I've seen the transition. I've been here. I think I'm the longest sitting board member here, so I've seen what you guys have to go through and see the support that our staff needs, and you guys have gone above and beyond for that. And, you know, I want to thank you so much for coming, just coming and just clarifying what we do to support our staff on a daily basis. So I want to thank you guys so much for your hard work. I greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I want to thank Ms. Vega also for preparing the presentation on behalf of that department. And I believe maintenance is now using her presentation as well. So thank you for the great work, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Vega. Good job.
Thank you all. We move on to Agenda Item 2.2, Cash Account Report.
Mrs. Pettis, I believe, has 2-2 through 2-6 ready.
Yes, sir. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. So we'll give them a little bit of time there to pull this up. So I've made some notes on the PowerPoint that I have today, just because we have some new board members, and I would like for you all to know exactly where I'm pulling those numbers as I call them out. I don't usually do that. I can if you want to, but I thought for this meeting, it would be appropriate if we had something guiding the numbers that I'm calling out, because there's a lot of them on there. So on the bank balances, on the cash accounts, which are our first community bank accounts, we have six million, four hundred and twenty-one thousand, twenty dollars and sixty-nine cents. Our investments, we have fifty million, two hundred and thirty thousand, three hundred and six dollars and fourteen cents, for a total of fifty-six million, six hundred and fifty-one thousand, three hundred and twenty-six dollars and eighty-three cents. Next is our Student and Campus Activity Report. For all of our campus and student activity reports, we have a total of five hundred and twenty-three thousand, five hundred and six dollars and nineteen cents. And I have given you all a breakdown of each of the Student and Campus Activity Report, Student and Campus Activity Groups for each of those campuses or departments and their balances. Negative means that they have money. It's good to know, right?
Thank you for clarifying that.
So on the comparison of revenues and expenditures to the budget, I'll go over the different sections and what we have either received or spent for those sections. So for General Operating Fund, on our revenues, we have received eighty-one million, four hundred and forty-seven, four hundred and seventy-four thousand, sixty-one dollars and seventy-four cents. For federal programs, we have received sixteen million, eighty-six thousand, nine hundred and seventy-two dollars and forty-five cents. For Interest and Sinking, which is our bond and debt service, we've received seven million, two hundred and seventy-three thousand, one hundred and ten dollars and ninety-one cents, for a total of one hundred and four million, eight hundred and thirty-four thousand, one hundred and forty-five dollars and ten cents. In our capital projects, that one, as you know, is cumulative from the last, from the inception of our projects all the way to date. And our total interest that we've received to date is eight hundred and thirty-six thousand, three hundred and forty-nine dollars and eighty cents, including the forty million that we've received from the state. In our expenses, for General Operating Fund, we have spent to date seventy-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-four dollars, five hundred and fifty-six, three hundred and seventy-four thousand, five hundred and fifty-six dollars and sixty-nine cents. Federal programs, twenty-one million, five hundred and nine thousand, sixty-nine dollars and five cents. In debt service, seven million, eight hundred and three thousand, nine hundred and forty-seven dollars and seventy cents, for a total of one hundred and eight million, six hundred and seven thousand, six hundred and eighty-seven thousand, five seventy-three and fifty-one cents. And in our capital projects, we have spent nine million, nine hundred and seven thousand, four hundred and seventy-four dollars and eighty-two cents. Oops, I did not change the screen. I'm sorry about that. So our Tax Collections Report. I've outlined that the left side is our MNO. That's what we spend on maintenance and operations. And the INS, those are our tax collections for the interest and sinking. That's our bond and debt service payments. And it's broken down between current and delinquent. So I wanted to make sure that you all were aware of what we were looking at when we talk about that. So to date, and by that, I mean from October till April thirty-first, because that is the tax calendar year, we've received fourteen million, nine hundred and ninety-two thousand, one hundred and nineteen dollars and twenty-six cents. And if you look at the bottom, the percent we've collected so far is ninety point thirty-seven to date, and compared to last year of eighty-five point sixty-four, we are definitely doing a lot better than we did last year. And then on our check registers, we have spent between general funds, student activity, construction, scholarship payroll, and payroll liabilities, a total of ten million, two hundred and ninety thousand, three hundred and eighty-eight dollars and fourteen cents. And I have attached the details of each of those checks. So if anybody has any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer that.
I do have a question. Ms. Vicki, on a check number seven-six-seven-eight-two-four to Escamia and Ponec LLP, it's for Legislative Consulting Services. Would that be considered another legal counsel as well?
That is a lobbyist fee.
Okay.
That's not, they're not doing legal services. They're doing lobbying for the school district on our behalf at the state level.
Okay.
Any other questions?
What about David K. Young Consulting? There was a payout of a hundred fifty-seven thousand dollars.
On the payroll liabilities, that's most likely some of our benefits. I know for a fact that the David K. Young that we have, that I have personally, is our flexible spending account. There may be some other cafeteria items in there that will be included. So flexible spending account for the payroll. I can't recall any of the other David K. Young benefits off the top of my head.
So these are the costs that are incurred for the employees, and you all pay out to David K. Young. However, we have an insurance agent. So can you explain that to me, how that works?
These are costs that the employees have elected to opt into. So, for example, myself, I chose to have a flexible spending account, spending account. So I'll pay X amount of dollars to the school, and the school will pay it on my behalf to David K. Young. So this is aside from our basic health insurances. These are all cafeteria items that they can choose at their own discretion at the beginning of the school year.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And I do have another question, and I want to thank you also for putting more detail into this report, because there's going to be less questions now, too, because we're going to be able to understand this a lot more. I noticed that one on American Express, there's, it says, Attention, G. Muñoz.
So that has one description, but the software will bulk all of the purchase orders that belong to that check and get the description off the first purchase order. So it may be, attention, like you said, G. Muñoz. It may be Hobby Lobby, whatever it may be. It's going to pick the first check, and it's going to bulk it all into that one. It's pulling the check, the vendor, and the first description of the list of POs that fall under that American Express payment.
So G. Muñoz would be like an employee that used the card to purchase?
Most likely, yeah. Some of the secretaries will put an attention to who that purchase order is referencing to so that they can purchase on their behalf. And we have, I've worked extensively with the secretaries about making sure that that first-line item on their PO is exactly what they're supposed to be buying, because that's the line that goes on the reports. So we've, I've, poor Boticitos, I keep returning their stuff, because I want it to be correct. But they're doing really well with getting it done, so.
Yes, they are. And I was thinking about that. I was like, I'm pretty sure it takes a lot more work to be able to put detail in there.
Yes, and some of the payments that come onto this list are from purchase orders that were done maybe a couple of months ago. So if I implemented this in December, it's barely starting to have that final trickle of all of those being phased out that were not described correctly or appropriately enough for the board reports. So it's gotten a lot better. They've been, they've done very well.
Yes, and thank you to all the staff.
Any other questions?
I do have another question. I had noticed also on Roarig Oliveda and Fisher, there was a payment done last month for about twenty-five hundred. And then this month, this, actually in March, and then there was another, a couple more done in April for twenty-nine hundred, and then another one for twenty-six hundred. So I wanted to know more about that, about those fees.
I don't have that information at the, like, at my fingertips, but I can definitely get that report to you for those payments. You said in April? I mean, this current check register or was?
There was March and April.
Yes, I'll get that for you, ma'am.
Is the question for Roarig? Is that the question?
Yes, sir.
And those will total up to about eighty-one hundred dollars. That was for a DIA investigation?
DIA investigation, which is what, sir?
It's when a, when an employee files a grievance and claims there's some type of discrimination, the board appoints an attorney to investigate. Roarig is one of our two. We have retainers. Rayfield is the other.
Dr. Carmen, since you mentioned, I don't know if this is the right time to discuss this, but you mentioned retainers. Why are we offering retainers to these firms? I guess what I'm thinking of is, we're a school district. I can see a retainer being paid to someone who, you know, they're trying to make sure that they're not going to be moving on without any payment. But for a school district and an entity our size, why are we offering retainers to these, to a law firm? Or what's the necessity for it?
Sure. So beyond the general counsel, anytime that there is a DIA complaint, which, again, is some reference to being discriminated against, we need outside counsel to give an objective investigation and to report back to the board their findings. The retainer agreement simply outlines what they will be charged per hour when they conduct those investigations. Typically, we give them twenty-five hundred dollar retainer. I mean, it's a small, it's a small amount. That DIA was eighty-one hundred. I think when Rayfield did one, we may have paid them around nine thousand dollars for one. So it's, that's pretty typical, seven to ten thousand dollars, depending on the number of people that have to be investigated and questioned. But, yeah, we give them a minor, a very minimal retainer, but it sets the fees.
And, Dr. Carmen, would it have been possible to use Mr. Torres to handle these cases?
No, ma'am. That's a conflict of interest if an attorney who's your general counsel or who works for the school district, works for the board, were to come in and conduct that investigation and then try to report it back to the board while representing the board. So the general counsel represents the board when they receive the report and makes recommendations upon that other counsel's findings.
Okay, thank you. And I do have another question on the construction, because it was unclear. And I did ask Palacios last time when he was here, but it remained unclear to me. Because I see that there's fees that are paid out, there's checks that are given out to, like, Davila Construction and then Contracting, PBK Architects, and so forth. But I also know that we pay Palacios a monthly pay as well. So can you all clarify that for me, please?
Go ahead. Okay, so, go ahead, sir.
The payout structure for Mr. Palacios was four and a half percent of the total cost of construction for all three of the projects. And there was a payment made at the beginning of the contract, and then it was paid fifty thousand dollars per month until we hit a limit of maybe one point two-five million.
Correct.
And then we did a holdback of the rest of it. So based on the number of months that Mr. Palacios and Brighton Group has worked for the school district, we are no longer paying them fifty thousand dollars a month. We have the amount that we're holding back. And he won't receive that until all of the projects are done. But as far as the fifty thousand dollar payments per month, we have reached that limit, and we are no longer sending those to the Brighton Group.
Their last check was in December.
And so before this, he would send out a payment to them, or no?
We would send out a fifty thousand dollar check as described on the agreement. So he's reached that threshold. We have a small amount that we're holding back until all of the projects are done. But he has not received a check since December, because we've already reached that amount that was on the contract.
And with those, that amount that you all were paying him, would he pay out the other construction companies? Or it was still a separate check, or what?
That's his fee for the project management.
To be a project manager. Okay. All right. Thank you for clarifying.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions?
Yes, Vicki, you did say that he reaches one point two already?
He's reached one point two, one million, two hundred and fifty thousand as of December, two thousand and twenty-twenty. Yes, sir.
Have, Dr. Carmen, have we given, have you given him like a timeframe already of by when you want him to finish, or?
Right. So we've had a timeline on each of the three projects. They're really driven by the architect and then the construction company. He works to oversee those and try to get them completed in a timely fashion. We had some delays with the development through the architect. When they had COVID, they didn't have everybody available in the office. But yes, there are recommended timelines from the architect. And when the board considers the guaranteed maximum price for the vertical construction on the next two projects, there will be estimated timelines for completion as well, and that'll come from our contractor.
And he'll be meeting with you? Is that how it works? He meets with you to let you know, these are the bids, these are the contractors, and you tell him, go ahead, move forward, or does he come to us again?
Yes, ma'am. He will bring the guaranteed maximum price. All those bids he was referencing last time he presented to the board, he will bring that as a complete package for the Aquatic Center and the Performing Arts Center, and the board will consider that. We did a guaranteed maximum price as a bidding. It's very transparent. You'll see exactly what each component of those buildings will cost us. And then Davila will oversee that, and they get a percentage to oversee that with all the subs that are doing the work. But it will come to the board for consideration.
Okay. Thank you.
Dr. Carmen, I got a question for you. Since there are that topic. Can you please elaborate a little bit? I know we go back in a few years with this whole process. Can you please elaborate on the, you know, how Mr. Palacios was paid? Was he paid on some of the interest that was earned from the bond?
Has he been paid on the interest?
No. Has he, some of his funds covered through the interest that was occurred by the bond?
And we have earned eight hundred thousand plus in interest. I just saw that number on Mrs. Pettis's presentation. If he's been paid one and a quarter, yeah, two-thirds of it roughly would have been covered by the interest made on the bond. Sure.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Dr. Carmen, and just so the community could know, because I know this question was brought up at the previous committee meeting as well. Can you explain that, the bond, as far as, is it money that belongs to the school district or not?
Yes, so I can. I'm going to look to Mr. Flores there. Is that, based on our agenda, is that a? Are we veering from the agenda, or are we okay?
I was about to interrupt. I think at this point, we are somewhat veering from the item on the agenda. I think if we wanted to discuss that, we should list the bond as a specific item for discussion.
Okay.
So the expenditure, well, can he answer this? The expenditures that are related to the bond, the money that we're using to pay these construction companies, is that taxpayer money?
So on the payments you're seeing, you have it coming from proceeds of the bond. The bond was a result of the community voting to approve these projects and approve the bond to pay for them. So, yes, it's based on that vote. We receive right now forty percent of that, I think, back from the state. And next biennium, we anticipate over fifty percent coming back from the state. So that's a loaded question. It's based on the community's vote, but we do receive state funding for a portion of it.
That this district uses to pay for the construction?
That's correct.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions, ladies and gentlemen? All right. That said, we'll move on to the consent agenda items. Consent agenda items for Business and Finance. Consent agenda item three point one, Request Approval to Accept Gifts, Bequest for 2020-2021 School Year. Questions? Consent. Item three point two, Request Approval of Budget Amendments for 2020-2021 School Year. Questions? Consent. Item three point three, Request Approval of Option to Extend Bid Proposal on Workers' Compensation Insurance for One Additional Year. Questions? Consent. Item three point four, Item three point four, request approval of the renewal of Skyward software for student and finance. Questions? Consent? Item three point five, request approval of the purchase of licenses for CIS Cisco Meraki Systems Manager. Questions? Consent? Item three point six, request approval of the purchase of licenses for Cisco Voice Phone System. Questions? Consent? Moving on to consent agenda items for administration, agenda item four point one, request approval of the memorandum of understanding, MOU, between San Manito CISD and United Migrant Opportunity Services migrant and seasonal head start program, Umos MSHS. Question? Item four point two, request approval of the memorandum of agreement between San Manito CISD and Tropical Texas Behavioral Health Center for the 2021, 2022 school year. Question? Question? Item four point three, request approval of district by design agreement between San Manito CISD and Capture and Kids Heart Flipping Group for the 2021, 2022 school year. Question?
Question?
Item four point four, request approval of the purchase of NWEA map assessments. Question? Consent? Item four point five, request approval of the purchase of Texas Curriculum Management Cooperative, TCMPC Agreement for the 2021, 2022 school year. Questions? Consent? Item four point six, request approval of the update to the 2020, 2021 Texas Teacher Evaluation and Support System T-Test Appraisal Calendar. Question? Consent? Agenda item four point seven, request approval of holiday calendar for two hundred and sixty-plus day employees. Question? Question? Item four point eight, request approval of renewal of Vector Solutions Education K-12 Safety and Professional Growth Solutions for the 2021, 2022 school year. Question? Consent? Item four point nine, request approval of renewal of frontline education agreement for the 2021, 2022 school year. Question? Consent? Item four point ten, request approval of nominating an SBC ISD trustee to serve on the TASB Board of Directors. Question? Consent? Item four point eleven, request approval of board minutes. Question? Do you have a question? Going back to four point ten? Okay. Moving on again, I'm sorry, do, item number four point eleven, request approval of board minutes. Question? Consent? Okay, so at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve all consent agenda items under business and finance, consent agenda items under administration except for four point one, four point two, four point three, four point seven, and four point ten.
So move.
It's moved by Mr. Lopez and seconded by Mr. Silva. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign?
I meant to say aye. I was too late.
Okay. Motion carries, seven oh. All right, moving on to, going back actually to agenda item four point one, request approval of the memorandum of understanding, MOU, between San Manito CISD and United Migrant Opportunity Services migrant and seasonal head start program.
It's not a question. I just wanna make sure that the taxpayers, that the people that are watching, know what this memorandum of understanding is for. Can you explain to the public, please?
What the memorandum of understanding, it creates an open line of communication between the Umos and the school district. So as they're doing their screenings for students, there are three-year-olds up to, I say, five-year-olds. When they're doing their screenings and they identify or possibly see that there may be some delays and learning delays, they go ahead and communicate with our special ed department so they can, we can start the process for assessment. And so what it does, it reduces the barriers for parents. So instead of having to come back to special ed and do the communicating and filling out the paperwork, they already have the information and it facilitates that process with the parents.
Move to approve.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to approve agenda, consent agenda item for administration, four point one.
Second.
Mr. Lopez seconds. Oscar, Mr. Medrano makes a motion and Mr. Lopez seconds. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion carries, seven oh. Consent agenda item four point two, request approval of the memorandum of agreement between San Manito CISD and Tropical Texas Behavioral Health Center for the 2021, 2022 school year.
Same thing, just...
Sure. Yeah, good evening. I'll, I'll explain this. MOU is to identify and refer to Tropical Texas Behavioral Health Center. It's also providing Text Tropical Texas Behavioral Health Center access to campuses for purpose of establishing and continuing care system for those students. They may need that. Also, it's a collaboration with the Tropical Texas Behavioral Healthcare Center, works with purposes of making referrals for continued care assessments and treatment of students being identified. Those are the three goals for that MOU.
Motion to approve.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
The, this will be for students to receive treatment?
If, if those assessments and those referrals are needed, yes.
Okay, and they will, they will be done here or at the facility?
I believe they take them, they, they do, it's go to the facility.
Okay, because I know when I was here, Tropical Texas...
I'm not too sure, Ms. Lopez.
Would come and see some of the students. Some of the campuses were okay with that because it would allow for the student to not miss out too much time from school, you know? And so they were provided a private room so that way they can meet with a student privately. So that's why I was asking to see if...
Yeah, in my experience, we've done it several ways. When I was campus principal, I'm not sure how we've done it at San Manito. When I was campus principal and my former district as well, depending on the case, they could do some of it on campus and if it needed to be, then they would proceed to have the parents take them to the clinic.
Right, right. And I think that that helps out so that way the students don't miss appointments as well. It makes it a lot easier for, for the students to receive the proper mental health care that they need.
Sure.
Thank you.
Ms. Medrano, thank you. We do have a motion on the floor by Mr. Oscar Medrano to approve consent agenda item four point two, request approval of the memorandum of agreement between San Manito CISD and Tropical Texas Behavioral Health Center for the 21, 22 school year. Do I have a second?
Second.
A bunch of you. Okay, we'll go with Ms. Lopez for once over here on my left. Ms. Lopez, so we have a motion by Oscar Medrano and a second by Ms. Janie Lopez. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion carries, seven oh. Okay, consent agenda item four point three, request approval of district by design agreement between San Manito CISD and Capture and Kids Heart Flipping Group for the 2021, 2022 school year. Ms. Lopez?
Yes, sir. Thank you. I do have, first of all, I want to say, thank you for doing this for our students. You know, the social-emotional learning is very important for our students so they can be successful. And we know that research shows that when we provide these type of services to the students, that it helps improve academics. And I myself did programs like this and, and I saw the big changes, major changes that, that occurred in the students and all positive changes. It's a good concept, you know, it has a lot of good components to it. So I wanted to know, based on the campuses, based on the feedback that you all got from the campuses, what were some of the strengths and weaknesses about this program?
That's, that's a great question. And I do have some campus principals that are here with us today. I also have our Director of Staff Development, Mrs. Ramidis, and Capturing Kids Hearts, one and only, Mark Hartman, who are all here to give some feedback on those questions.
Good afternoon, Dr. Carmen, Mr. Board President and members of the board. I would like, I have a short presentation for you about Capturing Kids Hearts. And also, we got, we did gather the information that was requested as far as the pros and the cons. And we do have two of our principals here to speak as well. But I'd like to talk about the purpose, the outcomes, and the approach of capturing kids' hearts. So the purpose is to build a social-emotional learning-focused foundation for sustainable transformation. Capturing kids' hearts is a process to provide the strategy and training for teachers and administrators to achieve success in today's classrooms. Educators in pre-K through 12 are equipped to implement transformational processes focused on social-emotional well-being, relationship-driven campus culture, and student connectedness. So at the beginning of the year, after teachers, teachers and paraprofessionals and all staff go through the initial training, when school starts, and I'm thankful that we'll be, hopefully, real-world, students are back in classrooms, teachers and students will create social contracts. And these contracts are used throughout the year to hold each other accountable for the behaviors that are in the classroom. Okay? So capturing kids' hearts is not a program that you implement. It is a process and a culture that you cultivate. The stronger you nurture it, the stronger that it will grow. As far as the outcomes, the Capturing Kids Hearts research-based process improves five key indicators of school performance, which is fewer discipline referrals, improved attendance, higher student achievement, lower dropout rates, and higher teacher satisfaction. And these are the things that we will be measuring this coming year. Schools that have implemented capturing kids' hearts have reported strengthened student connectedness, consistent rules of conduct, reduction in truancy and dropouts, reduction of negative behaviors, improvement in student academic performance, along with improvement in test scores, higher rate of job satisfaction, increased teacher retention, and also teacher recruiting. And the approach that is used is all staff will go through a immersive participatory experience. And through this process, they will learn how to build meaningful, productive relationships with every student and their colleagues as well. They will also use the Capturing Kids Hearts Excel teaching model, which Excel stands for engage, explore, communicate, empower, and launch. They'll also learn to develop self-managing and team-building skills and also incorporate the social contract and the high payoff techniques for dealing with conflict, negative behavior, and disrespect issues. So at the beginning of this school year, we did have five campuses that were trained. And after that, that training that took place, there was a survey that was conducted. We had two hundred and seventy-eight educators participate in the training. Of the two hundred and seventy-eight participants, two hundred and two educators completed the survey. So that's a seventy-two point sixty-six, almost seventy-three percent did respond to the survey. And please keep in mind that the training this, this past year was done virtually because we were in the middle of the pandemic. But with that being said, notice that the training satisfaction was ninety-nine percent of educators reported extremely satisfied or satisfied with the training. And the likeliness to recommend Capturing Kids Hearts training to others was at ninety-eight point five percent of educators reporting very likely or moderately likely to recommend the training. Now, as far as the feedback from our campuses, I got feedback from six of our campuses that have been trained in Capturing Kids Hearts, beginning with Frank Roberts. They're the ones that have been with, using Capturing Kids Hearts for two years. And the other campuses, Angela Lial, Rangerville, and all of our three middle schools also provided feedback. And I'm not going to read everything word for word. I'm just going to highlight the red, the words that are in red. So from Frank Roberts, we have their best practices to build relational capacity, high expectations, building self-esteem and confidence. The pros from Angela Lial, Principal Ms. Jaquez, reduce disciplinary issues, positive faculty-student interactions, increase engagement. From Rangerville, Principal Nora Martinez states, it was a tool to be able to address concerns with students and it allows for students to reflect on their behavior. And these purposes, these processes are, this feedback ties directly to the, to the quote that no one cares how much you know until you know how much they care. And, and teachers building these relationships beginning of the school year have, have a strong payoff. Now, our feedback from our secondary schools, the pros, from Mr. Ibarra, Berta Cabasa, middle school principal, students build relationships, they develop interpersonal skills, they're college and career-ready, dress and interact in job interviews, and they develop smart goals. From our Miller Jordan principal, Ms. Joanne Fernandez, this is a resource the teachers will utilize for classroom management, discipline, and building strong relationships. And one thing that she did mention that I did not highlight in red is without conflict. So there's a process and questions that they ask through the Capturing Kids Hearts process that helps students identify that they're responsible for their behavior, and it's up to them to change that behavior. For Riverside, some of the pros is that everyone knows the process used at the campus. So there's consistency because we make sure that everyone is trained at the campus. The other thing looking forward, if this is approved tonight and hopefully we can continue next year, to continue training the rest of our campuses, this will be something that if we have a student that moves from one campus to another, the expectations are, are just going to be the same. As far as the cons from our elementary campuses, we can see that Frank Roberts had none noted. Angela Lial and Rangerville, both of them, if you read their comments carefully, they both kind of state that it was a little challenging to implement it effectively because of COVID. Other than that, they did not see really any cons. And the Rangerville principal, Ms. Nora Martinez, states in her last sentence, it would be unfair to say that it did not work. Our secondary principals, we can see BC and Miller Jordan, there was no cons that they stated. And as far as Riverside, her comment is again around COVID. So if we look at our overall, again, I'm only going to highlight the words in red. For Frank Roberts, understanding of how they're interact, how they're, this is for, I'm sorry, let me back up. This helped the teachers understand how their interactions positively or negatively impact students. For Angela Lial, this was an opportunity for our faculty and staff to work with our students in a kinder and gentler way. And Ms. Nora Martinez at Rangerville, this helps us as we continue to develop the social-emotional peace with our students. And again, the overall feedback from our secondary schools was also very positive. It's to have built relationships among peers, and these are learning leadership qualities. For Miller Jordan, directing and redirecting behaviors framed in a positive way, and it's based on building relationships. And Riverside, they use the, the component of positive affirmations throughout the day with their students. The other things that were noted is that they would hear students say, please, more, thank you, just being polite, acknowledging each other with a good morning. So these are all things and soft skills that we want our students to learn and walk away with, especially as they move throughout their high school years and into the workforce. Now, as far as our LEAD-worthy course, again, this is a course that all of our sixth graders have gone through this year. This is a TEA-approved course. The PMS code number is indicated there as well, so it is approved by TEA. And all, again, sixth graders went through the course. We have some feedback from our LEAD-worthy teachers. It's our Miller Jordan LEAD-worthy teacher. She says the program goes hand-in-hand with the social and mental sides of health. And Berta Cabasa, Ms. Scarlett Hernandez, this is a valuable asset to Berta Cabasa Middle School and to our district. And we have a short video from one of our teachers. Let's see if we can get it to play. Let's see if we can get it to play.
.........................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
Yeah, so that, and I have to give credit to Miller Jordan Middle School, they put this together, Mr. Valivar, Valdemar Olivares. It's a good job. Then we also gathered some feedback from our students. And I believe in January, the people that were sitting on the board received letters from some of the sixth grade students, kind of giving their feedback about the LEAD-worthy. And this was a culmination activity that the teacher had asked them to do, to just give thanks to the board for having approved that course. So speaking, Jason Sandoval, a Miller Jordan student, he says, "In LEAD-worthy, we learned so much. For example, we learned how to be a good leader, self-esteem, empathy, and much more. LEAD-worthy honestly helped me build up as a person. Coach O'Connor is really good at explaining our assignments to us, such as empathy, which helps us a lot as a student. She is very easy on us when it comes up to assignments, which is really appreciated at this time since it really isn't a normal school year. She is such a positive and fun teacher. Overall, I really enjoy my LEAD-worthy class." Then we have a student from Berta Cabaza Middle School, Alicia Alexander. "My name is Alicia Alexander, and I am a sixth grade student in the LEAD-worthy Leadership Class at Berta Cabaza Middle School. As part of my class assignment, I'm writing to you to tell you, to let you know that I feel what I feel about my LEAD-worthy Leadership Class. This class has really helped me grow as a student and as a leader. It has allowed me to make more friends and look at things in a positive way and more. I learned about self-concept, self-confidence, and how to reframe situations. I can now look at a situation and be able to throw out things that are negative or not productive and only concentrate on the positive. I know also, I now also think before I act because impressions speak about a person, and I don't want to create a false or negative impression about myself to others. I think this class is the best thing that has ever happened. I know and I will remember this class as I grow. I will soon tell people about this class when I am older." And I have about 30 other comments from students as well about their appreciation for the class. And we do have Mr. Diaz here. And Mr. Diaz, remember that he started with our LEAD-worthy, he was our first campus. He was, his campus was trained during when we were in-person, and he's kind of continued this process this year through our virtual year.
Mr. Ramirez, first and foremost, I'd like to commend you on your presentation. It was very well put together. Thank you for answering some of our questions.
Thank you.
And it's great to hear from not only our LEAD-worthy teacher, but to hear comments from our students as well. And in addition to all of that, hearing the pros and the cons, and again, we all have been through a tremendous time this past year, and we've overcome. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Diaz, welcome. Thank you for being here. And we're going to put you on the spot. Give us some positive aspects of this program that you've encountered, despite the hardships you've encountered due to COVID.
I'm ready, sir. I wish I could say that it's, Frank Roberts is changing because of the awesome principal that's there, but I can't. It's a great, it's a great staff that we have, it's a community that we, the school community that we have. And I want to say that everything that was highlighted here, I can speak to because I've seen it on my campus. We have better teacher retention on my campus. We have better attendance. We have a culture that is growing and is better. For those of you who have visited our campus, you know what I'm talking about. We see the difference in our kids when they get off the car, when they're in the hallways. And so we know that this is changing. This is, it's very, very internal with the students. It's internal with the parents. It's internal with our teachers. Because we do it all the time. We're good to our kids, we're good to our parents. But what we learn here through this program helps us understand that, you know what, it's something that we need to be doing all the time. And so we see it with our kiddos. And we started off last year, pre-COVID, we were off and rolling, we could see the difference it was making, excuse me, we could see the difference it was making, and then COVID kind of cut us off at the knees with Star. We're back, we come back to school, we have virtual, but my teachers did everything they possibly could to maintain those positive connections with the kids. And now that we have more than two-thirds of our kids back on campus, you can see that they haven't forgotten the practices that our teachers are using and how that's been beneficial. Questions?
Thank you, sir. That's great to hear. Thank you.
I commend you, sir, because I know that I researched this program, and one of the things that they say is the program is only successful if there's fidelity. If there's not fidelity, then it won't be successful. And these were studies that were done that were peer-reviewed, research-based, and that was my concern. You know, are the administrators buying into this process, this program? Are the teachers buying into it? Do they want to use this? Are you all working together with implementing this into the curriculum so that way it can become more natural to the teachers, to the students? And as well, are you involving your campus counselors? I had asked for Mr. Eri Sudis to be here as well, so I can see how you all can coordinate with him as well. So is there any coordination going on there as well with your counselors?
Well, again, because it's not a counseling program, and we're making sure that all staff is trained, however, the counselors were also part of the year when Frank Roberts got trained. Because it is a small school, we didn't fill all the seats, so all the counselors were invited to attend the training the first year. So I know some of them have tried to implement it their own way, even though some of them, their whole campus has not gone through the training, but they are starting to implement little pieces of it. And as far as implementing it with fidelity, you're absolutely correct. So one of the other things that we do through our Capturing Kids' Hearts initiative is we have the initial training, then we follow that up with the Process Champions training, and this is where each of the campuses selects certain number of teachers from their campus that become their cheerleaders for Capturing Kids' Hearts, and make sure and help the principal carry this out. Along with that, in the proposal for this year, we also have campus traction visits, which is that a consultant from Capturing Kids' Hearts will visit each of the Capturing Kids' Hearts campuses once in the fall, once in the spring, to kind of come and see what is happening and look for opportunities for growth if we need to. The other thing that's also included is that we will have a recharge training for all the campuses that have already been trained to make sure that they're continuing with the process as well.
Okay, and I understand what you're saying about it's not a counseling program, but it is a social emotional development program, so then it does fall under the counseling duties?
And I have spoken to Ms. Eri Sudis, and he's well on board, and he does talk about it with the counselors as well.
Right, because it's character development.
Right.
That's what it is. And the counselors working together with the teachers, it's a great team, you know. And then the other question was to flip in, because I know the LEAD-worthy course is under TEA, but it's not under the U.S. Department of Education. When I was here in the district, we only purchased programs or processes, like you said, under PBIS that were recommended by the U.S. Department of Education. And what they do, the U.S. Department of Education does extensive studies that are peer-reviewed. I saw, there's one from Harvard University, and PBIS programs, they have a whole listing of programs that are peer-reviewed and that they recommend, and that are approved to buy with federal funds, you know. And so then, my question to you, sir, is, is this a peer-reviewed program? And just so the public could understand, peer-reviewed, it's kind of like you do a study, right? But then that peer review means you put a gold seal on it, because it's been looked at already to make sure it was an effective study that was done. And it lessens biases as well.
Thank you for asking that question, because we worked with New York, the city of New York, with BOCs there, which are like regions here, but they call them BOCs in New York. And ourselves, with many other peers, we did have that review. And I believe in a document that was sent back, it has that about the BOCs and approval. So yes, we did get a sample approval on that. As far as...
When was that study done?
I think that one with BOCs was done in 2011 or 2012. There's another one that's going on in South Carolina that I mentioned last time, but we haven't gotten the results back. And that's being put on by the government or the other entities that pay for it, not us. We were invited to be there for eight originally, the government and the founder tour, and we wanted the four finalists, and we continued to do the process with them for three years so they can see if there's fidelity in the processes over time. So we're waiting for that review. They, it can only happen when people put up the money to be able to do that, because that's what we're used to. So we can't motivate them in any way because it's not our stuff. In regards to the government approving PBIS, there's two parts of PBIS. There's the big PBIS and the small PBIS. PBIS is a government-funded organization, but we're not. We're a private entity. Does the United States Education Department approve of what we're doing? Yes, but there's not a stamp that they give outside entities unless it's a government entity themselves. But I can tell you, we're in 42 states and over 10,000 school districts, and we've been doing this now for almost 30 years, and the outcomes have been phenomenal. The TEA, there's a question asked also, will be approved with the state? And Flip is on, many of our good TEA work on SEL concepts and how to move forward with the administration. And you brought up a great question about counselors. You're right, the counselors being a part of that on the SEL side. So there's fidelity in the administration with the counselors in there also. They know exactly what's going on with the teachers, and so when students are coming in there, they're able to align well with the teachers and what's happening in the classroom, kind of like you were asking earlier. And then the counselors know the same exact thing because they're going by the same principles. But they weren't, and the counselors weren't involved in that, their view is up. Because when you have some places that might go past the line that allows them to be self-managed in the class, then you can go to the counselor or to the principal. You want to make sure that what the counselors are saying and what the teachers are saying. So...
Right. And I know that the Counseling Department just recently bought a program as well, Ripple Effects, I believe, and so I wanted to see how that was correlated to this as well, to see if it was going to help you achieve what you were trying to achieve. And so, so, thank you, sir. I appreciate it. So my question to you is, knowing that this is not something that is approved by the Department of Education, you know, and knowing that there are other programs that you all can look at as well and see which one is the best, do you still want to proceed with this one?
I would like to proceed with this one, reason being that Frank Roberts has already been trained, we have five other campuses that also have been trained, the feedback has been nothing but positive. And again, this is a process, it's not a program, so the things that the teachers are learning, the things that the students are learning through LEAD-worthy are going to be things that they will continue to use in education and even when they go out into the workforce.
Yes, it is a process, yes, I agree. But you also use handouts, you use videos, you use training, so part of it is a program as well. And so just wanted to make sure that you understood there was other stuff out there, and if not, then we can take a vote on this, if this is what you would like.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you all so much for being here, I appreciate you all.
I'd like to thank y'all for being here, Ms. Ramirez. Thank you for bringing this program to SBC ISD. I'd like to thank the campus principals for implementing this program, and I'm very interested to see how your students at Frank Roberts did with the LEAD-worthy class at BC. And I just think, just based on these students' feedback, using words like empathy and self-confidence, I mean, at a sixth grade level, that's really great. And I'd like to think here at SBC ISD, we're creating a culture of empathy with each other because we know how vicious this world can be with things like social media and stuff like that. So I'd like to thank you for bringing this program to SBC ISD, and hopefully we can take that vote on it.
Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Ramirez, I want to thank you so much, you know. You know, what I've seen, the transitions, since I've been a board member till now, I've seen the transition, our school just becoming a nationally recognized school district. I've seen, you know, teamwork, I've seen our directors, I've seen our principals buy into the programs that we're purchasing, because they're the ones that are going to, you know, go into the trenches and use it. And it's very obvious it's working, you know. And I just want to thank you guys so much, you guys worked very hard to get us to this point. Yeah, we have some obstacles here with COVID, but, you know, this type of program here is just going to do great, right? Because you guys bought into it, you guys were the decision-makers in getting it. So, you know, it's easy for us to sit up here sometimes and question and, you know, and go on, but you know what, I see it, I've seen it, and I congratulate each and every one of y'all, and all our staff. So thank you all so much for your hard work and dedication. Thank you.
Yes, so thank you very much, once again, and I've heard great things about the LEAD-worthy class from students that I know from the different campuses and so forth, especially some from Berta Cabaza. And so I know that that's a program that's used only at the middle school level, but I myself, as a former director of a counseling program, know a lot about these programs as well. So that's why I wanted to make sure that you all had the best that you felt that you could utilize. So thank you, once again. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Before we let you go, though, I'd like to, I don't want to get Ms. Rivas off the hook. Ms. Rivas, you have one of the toughest age levels that you work with, and again, due to this pandemic, we all went through a lot of hardships, but, and again, we've already heard some of what was on the presentation, but I want to hear from you about this program as well.
Definitely. I'm very excited about this program. I've been in education for more than 20 years. I've been through a lot of professional development, some that was not, that did not work when we brought it back to the campus. It's very rare when I do see professional development or a program that we can bring back to a school that's going to be successful. And I think this program is a program that's going to be very successful at the middle school level. We all know that our elementary students are transitioning to a bigger middle school. And coming to a bigger middle school can be very, very scary. This program teaches these students to have that self-esteem that they need, a lot of self-respect, a lot of self-worth, respect for others, yes, sir, yes, ma'am. I can speak as a Latino youth growing up in the Rio Grande Valley, that when I joined the military, my sergeants had to drill into me using yes, sir, and yes, ma'am, because that is something that I did not grow up with. So we doing this at an early age with these middle school students, I think is an excellent thing to do for these young men and women, that they're going to grow up learning these values, that a lot of them probably don't get at their house because of their life, the way they're brought up, economically speaking. So I, I'm glad to lend my voice to this program. I've seen the successes, and this is my first year with the program. I'm not a second year like our fellow principal here behind me. So we're going through a pandemic this school year, and we've seen, and that's a negative and a positive for this program. and that's a negative and a positive for this program. Negative because we haven't been able to reach its full potential. So positive because we can reach our full potential once this pandemic is behind us. So I'm very excited about the program. I think it's going to do excellent, wonderful things for our students, for our community.
Thank you so much, and you know I wasn't going to let you off the hook, right, sir?
No, sir.
Thank you so much, everybody.
And for those campuses that will be using this, if approved by the board, make sure you take your tissues, right? Those of you that went to the trainings?
Definitely.
Yes, yes, okay. And then last question, so then, is this going to be bought with federal money, state money? What are y'all planning on using?
Yes, we are intending to use federal money for the purchase.
Okay, and just again, I would verify to see if you need to purchase a program that's peer-reviewed or not with federal money. Because when I bought the Second Step program, it had to be peer-reviewed.
And I will tell you, Mr. Pettis will not let anything go by if it's not supposed to be paid with federal money, so.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, with that said, we look back at this agenda item. Agenda item 4.3, request approval of district by design agreement between Samuelius ISD and capturing kids' heart flipping group for the 21-22 school year. Do I have a motion on the floor?
I make a move.
I, I'm sorry, I know there are several people, but since Mr. Medrano is right next to me, I heard him the loudest. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Oscar Medrano and a second by Janie Lopez. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to the agenda item 4.7, request approval of holiday calendar for 260-plus day employees. Mr. Lopez?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Board President. Dr. Carmen, so it's my understanding, looking at this employee holiday calendar, that the 260 employees are the only ones that are not going to have a four-day weekend? I think I'd have a good gesture, I think it would be nice that they have a four-day weekend during Easter and maybe give up one of the other days. I think it'll be nice. Everybody else has a four-day weekend except for the 260, correct?
I'm sorry, you're talking about Easter, is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir, Easter holiday.
So Dr. Cruz, I think you put this together. In order for us to pay for 260 days and have the appropriate number of workdays, would we have to give up something else to give them the additional day off?
Exactly.
We can, sir, we can very well exchange one of the current days that we have on the list. We currently have Labor Day, Columbus, two for Thanksgiving, two for Christmas, two New Year, one as a weather day, and one for the Easter holiday. These are the same days that we approved last year, but we can very well do that.
Yeah, I was just thinking, I think it'd be a good gesture for, everybody likes four-day holidays. So I hope the board doesn't mind, maybe we can swap one of those days, Columbus Day or Labor Day for a four-day weekend for the 260 employees, please?
Or the bad weather day?
Or the weather day. I would recommend the weather day. Yes. Thank you for bringing that up, I didn't want to say that, but...
She doesn't like football.
It was planned that way, that weather day, for a reason. We do have, you know, many people who take that day off.
Columbus Day is fine.
October 11th or February 7th, correct, is what we're looking at?
Yes, sir.
Columbus Day?
Sure.
I think that everybody appreciates the extra days after Christmas holidays because that's a long stretch. So if we can cut down one of those, either Columbus, well, Columbus Day, that would really help, I think.
Yes, sir.
I think Columbus Day is...
I agree.
We're happy to do that.
So at this time, can we go ahead and move to change that date? And then we would, do we have a day, or do we want to come back and table this now? Or can we pick that?
Not yet, I think we can put it a motion now, can we?
We can approve it with the removal of Columbus Day and additional Easter Day.
Yes.
So the extra Easter Day would come in April 16th, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
April 18th would be the Monday after. 15th is Good Friday, the 18th would be the Monday after.
Right.
So we want a motion to replace October 11th with April 18th, I believe.
Yes, sir, correct.
All right. So with that said, agenda item 4.7, request approval of holiday calendar for 260-plus day employees with the change of removing the October 11th date to the April 18th, 2022. Do I have a motion on the floor? Mr. Lopez, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Lopez moves, and I have a second by Dr. Cruz. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 7-0.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Final agenda item on the consent agenda, we're looking at item 4.10, request approval of nominating an SBC ISD trustee to serve in the TASB Board of Directors.
I'd be willing to serve if y'all were nominating. In committee meeting, so. I'm just saying.
Okay, at our committee meeting last week, we did discuss this, and we did ask if any board member was interested in serving or interested in being nominated as a TASB Board of Directors. And we did discuss Mr. Oscar Medrano. So at this point in time, I would like to maybe amend this agenda item by adding, not only requesting approval of nominating an SBC ISD trustee to serve on the TASB Board of Directors, but going ahead and naming Mr. Oscar Medrano as our Samuelius ISD nominee. Do I have a motion?
I move.
Mr. Corona makes a motion?
Second.
Ms. Lopez, seconds. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Motion carries. All right, moving on to action agenda items 5.1, discussion and possible action for approval of signature cards for First Community Bank. Dr. Carmen?
Actually, I think Mrs. Pettis is going to present on that. Mrs. Pettis?
Thank you. So we didn't take this to the committee meeting because we had just reorganized and the agenda had to go out 72 hours before. But since we have had a reorganization of our board, and we do need to take the president, the secretary, and Dr. Carmen to be included on our bank signatures. So with that, if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer.
Any questions? All right, at this point, thank you, Ms. Pettis.
Yes, sir.
Do we have a motion on the floor to approve signature cards for First Community Bank?
I have a motion to move.
Mr. Oscar Medrano moves.
Second.
And Janie Lopez, seconds. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 7-0. Agenda item 5.2, discussion and possible action to revise or amend BED local policy. Dr. Carmen?
Sir, the recommendation here is to modify... I apologize, I have my mic off. The recommendation here is to modify BED local, taking away from speaking on agenda items only. It would permit public comment regardless of where the topic is, an item on the agenda posted with notice of the meeting. And actually, based on an earlier statement, I do see where there should be one other change to this if approved by the board, where it says for each agenda item, a speaker shall be allowed a maximum of three minutes to make comments. If approved by the board, it should say for each topic, a speaker should be allowed a maximum of three minutes to make comments. But all other edits are present in the attachment.
Any discussion?
I just want to make a comment, you know, based on the U.S. Constitution, on our Texas Constitution, and it's very important that we give our public a voice. We have to give them the freedom of speech, in my opinion. They have the right to come and bring us whatever they think is positive about the district or whatever things they think that we need to improve on in the district. So I will never get tired of hearing any of our constituents come and give us the positive or the negative. It doesn't matter, you know. So all are welcomed, and I make a move.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Ms. Janie Lopez to amend BED local to include public comment whether the topic is on the agenda or not, and also making sure that we understand that the topic is timed for a maximum of three minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Medrano, seconds. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
If we can see a raise of hands, raise of hands, or call out the names of who voted for it.
All righty, let's go back. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 7-0. Okay, moving on to agenda item 5.3, discussion and possible action to extend the contract for student athletic insurance for a one-year period. Dr. Carmen?
Yes, sir, I think Mrs. Pettis is going to help me with this. We took this off the consent agenda based on the conversation in committee about whether we could offer this for elementary students, for example, and not just for athletics. So I believe we have two separate quotes there. Mrs. Pettis, would you like to elaborate?
Yes, sir, on the last page, we do have the original option to insure our students for UIL coverage for $171,000. Mr. Cavasos, our purchasing director did call Texas Insurance, and they did get a quote for an optional insurance to just insure them in general while on campus. And it was a total of $2 per student. So it's an extra $20,000. So as you're considering this agenda item, we would request that you please indicate whether you would like option one or option one and two, if approving.
Now, I have a question. How many?
One or two, I'm sorry. Go ahead, sir.
Okay, so it's kind of unheard of, but just so everybody understands, how many 6A school districts or how many school districts in the valley actually have this? Since we are so funded, we need to be very careful on how we insure and how we go about this process. So I'm just curious.
Mr. Cavasos did ask that question, and he said that there were no 6A schools that did offer this type of insurance. The ones that did offer this were very, very few, like less than a handful, and they were 1A schools.
Okay, so that's what I would ask, or I think, you know, since it was brought up, I think we should have maybe this person here that has this student contract insurance come to a committee meeting? So we can ask questions of why is it that no 6A school districts have it? I mean, maybe it's a good thing, but, you know, we're just not here to reinvent the wheel, you know. So we want to make sure, of course, we want to provide our kids with all the resources we need, but also we need to be very, very cautious with our expenditures and insurances.
Okay, sir.
Okay? So I don't know, that's my recommendation. Thank you.
So Mr. Lopez, I have a question for you. Are you referring to both options or specifically option two?
Option two only, sir.
Option two?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for that.
Right. And another thing that we would consider also, I think, is most of our families have either Medicaid or some kind of insurance, you know. So that's something else to consider.
So my...
For option two.
My question as well, we will, is there any difficulty in us approving option one if we so choose, and then coming back and adding on option two at a later time after a presentation in a committee meeting?
Not at all, sir. We can facilitate that, sir.
So what Ms. Lopez did mention, that's a little presumptive that the majority of kids have Medicaid. But, well, I guess we could ask it at the committee meetings. Okay.
If you'd like, we can get some of the questions that we might have. That way we can ask the insurance agent, and we can be a lot more well-informed as for like what to ask him so that we can get the information to you.
Absolutely. Thank you, ma'am, appreciate it.
Okay.
Okay, so at this point, for agenda item 5.3, do I have a motion on the floor? Or do I have a motion to approve the contract for student athletic insurance for a one-year period, either with option one or option two included?
So move.
Okay, and we're opting for both options, or?
Option one only.
Option one.
Okay, so once again, there's a motion on the floor. Thank you for student athletic, for purchasing or extending the contract for student athletic insurance covering only option one. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Medrano and second by Mr. Lopez. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 7-0. Next agenda item, agenda item 5.4, consideration and possible action regarding the following matters. One, amendment of the district's board policies regarding the purchase of goods and services, including but not limited to CH Local and/or other board policies or district regulations as necessary. And two, authorizing any other actions as necessary to carry out those matters in the best interest of the district. Dr. Carmen?
Yes, sir. So here the recommendation from the board or president is to reduce the limit allowed to the superintendent from $50,000 in CH Local to $25,000 in CH Local. Anything above $25,000 would then require board approval. Information I provided for your consideration are the CH Local policies from area school districts. You will see where Donna, Harlingen, Los Fresnos, Brownsville have $50,000 thresholds. Smaller districts such as Rio Hondo, Santa Maria, La Feria have a $25,000 threshold. I believe in the area would make us the only 6A district to have a $25,000 instead of $50,000. Additionally, I have included the POs thus far this year. I think there are 87 of them that fall in that range. In the previous fiscal year, we had 119 purchase orders that ranged between the $25,000 and the $50,000 threshold. So on average, 10 POs per month would have to come to the board for consideration. And whether that happened in the regular meeting and we waited for the regular board meeting, whether we had additional special board meetings so we could consider those POs, or we did a large open PO at the beginning of the year, but then you're losing that control over those individual purchases. Additionally, I did ask some directors whose departments routinely have these size of POs to come and present to you on how it would impact their departments and ultimately how we serve our students for your consideration. Is everybody in, there we go.
Hey, Doc, while they make way to the podium, can I ask you a question, sir, please, on this item?
Yes, sir.
One of my only concerns, Doc, is, you know, once again, we've gone through external audits. You know, I've been here, we've gone through like three or four different external auditors. And we're, you know, financially a-rated school system. I guess my question to you, Doc, has any external auditor ever made this recommendation before?
Not to my knowledge, Mrs. Pettis.
No, sir, they have not recommended that. They have checked our practices. They check to see whether or not the individual POs reach a certain threshold. They also review our highest POs, and that recommendation has never come up, sir.
Thank you. I think one of the major issues here, of course, it's borderline almost at this level, 6A, micromanaging, because there's a lot of stuff that goes on behind the scenes. I think what, you know, I think Dr. Carmen did a good point in bringing in the directors who are actually, that are in the trenches, that actually have to deal with this on a day-to-day basis. But I think it's very important to hear from all our directors, if they're here, and see how this would impact them, and we'll take it from there. But thank you all so much, appreciate it.
Would that even be something that is recommended by auditors?
If they felt that there was a need for oversight at that level, then yes, it would be. They've made recommendations on various different levels. That's never come up as a finding or a recommendation or any kind of comments.
So there's nothing, there's never been a precedent of any type of change that would require this or bring this up? Okay.
We have wonderful internal controls, we have it all documented. Procedures, guidelines have all been trained, so we have different levels of approval that safeguard us from...
Ma'am, with all due respect, we're in a financial school district, so you don't have to see another supplier. So I want to appreciate you so much for that. So at this time, can we have the directors come up here, please?
And this isn't every director who has a purchase order in that range, but I think these would have them the most common, the most often.
For our professional development department, we do spend large amounts of money for professional development and also for travel. So if this was increased, then we would have to wait until we have a board meeting. And in some cases, when we look at traveling, when we have to stay in hotels, sometimes host hotels will be booked, and we'd have to find alternate hotels, which then again, we would incur travel costs from that hotel to possibly the host hotel. So we do ask that you, you know, please consider leaving it at the 50,000 threshold.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening again. Let me just cover one of the things that we do at our environment because it's so fluid at our level. If I was to, I'll give you an example, Gulf Coast. Gulf Coast is one of the areas that we do a lot of purchasing with. Obviously, we have supplies that we go through a janitorial. If I was to come to the board, that means I have a delay, and it becomes a safety issue for me. And why is it a safety issue when it comes to ordering sanitizing type of equipment? That means I have to wait a process for a month before we can get that out. So if we were to program even three months out for that kind of equipment or that kind of service, razor, I'll give you an example, razor is the fogging equipment that we use at our, every school for deep cleaning. We need that. It's increasing, our numbers are increasing now, especially with students are coming back. I don't know what the threshold is going to be this next coming year if we have our children to come and return. We know that it's increased now because our teachers are back on there. We're doing a lot of work on the ground with that. So from a safety perspective, I think it's prudent to keep it for us at the 50K level. And again, because it's so fluid, we order on the average about $30,000 every two weeks, on the average. Some months, it might be $60,000. But, and again, it's not all-inclusive, but it is because it's moving through our different campuses. So again, that would be my recommendation. Thank you.
So if the current, right now is 50,000, and you say sometimes you do have to order 60,000, how do you do it then?
Well, the thing is, is if it's going towards each, I'll give you an example. So if I order razor, and that's the one product that I use quite frequently, and we use in our district, razor, again, is an itineratory item that we use across the district for every building, including the one that you're sitting in. So that by itself costs $21,000 on the average, maybe a little bit more, right? So if I was to... So if I was to prolong that process, then I wouldn't have that product on the hand. Now, I can definitely go forward and say, you know what, every quarter, I can order so much and come to the board. That's easy, but I'm talking about the daily usage of materials. That's also inclusive within that, because when I order it, it's going to be all together. It might be not sixty thousand dollars, but on the average, I'm talking monthly.
So do you think that with proper planning ahead of time that you would be able to do it?
Well, if we didn't have proper, because again, there's some things that we can't order always, so sometimes there's a delay. Or if we go ahead and program it three months in advance, some products are not available. So we have to go to another vendor to be able to get resourced. So now we have to come back to you as a board because we have a different vendor we got to use. So again, the fluidity of the items that we have at our level, it has to be able to maintain it and be able to run the district suitably for our students, and safety for me is paramount. So that's the reason.
Mr. Perez, so basically on a two-week, every two weeks you're spending at least over thirty thousand?
On the average, yes, sir, roughly. But because the campuses use a lot of the equipment, a lot of the items, so, yes, sir.
But definitely, it's over thirty thousand on a bi-weekly, to say.
Yes, sir. And the reason I said razor is because it's safety, because of the items that we use the most. So we may, you know, I do plan ahead, so we may give thirty days to maybe even sixty days. But again, depending if the product's not available, so I'll try to get as much as I can so that we have it on our hands. Again, you know, with competitive pricing out there, it's challenging, and some vendors do better than others. And so what we do is we want to plan, make sure that I have the right vendor at the right price. We don't want to overspend either.
So Mr. Perez, so it's very evident right now by, you know, what's, you know, come to the podium is that, you know, it affects the day-to-day operations, basically.
Absolutely, it will slow down my process completely, so now you're talking about.
It could potentially eventually be a hazard.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, thank you, appreciate it.
And then on the COVID side of things, you're the director of maintenance, correct? I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am, I am.
So we have to do the sanitizing and everything like that for the campuses?
Absolutely.
And that is also increasing in cost because of the amount that we're having to do it because of the pandemic?
That's correct.
So this could affect safety of the students and staff?
Absolutely, and that's the reason I brought that up, yes, ma'am.
That would be a racial product, right?
It's one of them, we have multiple products. You know, I welcome any of the board members to come down, and we can show you what we use and how we use it. I think it's, again, prudent to understand that piece, for me, and for the safety, obviously, of the school district.
So once again, as well, with careful forecasting and planning, it could be taken care of as well. Because I don't see any problem with coming to the board with nineteen or twenty additional purchase orders. So once again, surrounding yourself with the right people and knowing and having control, you should be able to come to the board with plenty of time to order things in advance, correct?
It's possible, yes, as long as we, again, as long as we don't have shifts of vendors, that is all possible, absolutely. But, you know, as you guys will know.
Thank you, sir.
Things are moving, so.
Mr. Perez, do you have the storage space available to store multiple months of supplies on hand for a district of our size?
I have, we have space, but if you were talking about anywhere between maybe two months or three months, no, sir. So it comes, it leaves. I don't like to maintain anything because there's obviously a show life of all we have. That includes our baby wipes, for example, baby wipes, and then we use Xanax, for example. We bought those for our smaller kids, elementary schools. We know that they have a lot of issues with their hands, so we didn't use the alcohol base. But the product is still usable at that level. Yes, sir.
Can you find more storage space if you need it?
We would have to build more space. But we've got the area, but we have to build. And so again, expenditures, I want to limit expenditures within our realm. I don't think that's what we want to do, because again, it's fluid, so we don't have to maintain it very often. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Fred Perez, I am the federal programs director. I can only speak on behalf of really what the campuses are doing with POs. A district this size and the amount of federal funds that we are awarded from, you know, from the government is, it makes it very difficult for us to spend when we throw another step into having to approve POs. So I am tasked with approving every single PO that is used through a federal fund account. A lot of the times, I, and I will take this year as an example, at the beginning of the year, we were scrambling to try to get one-on-one computers, we were trying to scramble to get hotspots. And a lot of these purchases weren't fifty thousand, which was great for us because we were able to go directly to AT&amp;T or the other companies we were using without having to come to board for approval. What ended up happening is we got a very good amount of hotspots, but we, I think we slowed down the computers because we had to wait for a board meeting to get approval while other districts were getting these items. You know, part of my job too is also not, is to spend the federal money, you know, because we have one year. This is a very unique year in that we have two years because they didn't recover funds. But usually, we have one year. I put the pressure on the principals and just reminding them, guys, you still have federal funds, you don't use it by the end of the year, that we're going to lose it, we're not, you know, it might come back, it might not, it may come back, it might not come back. So if, and I'll give an example as today, like I had a text from one of the directors saying, hey, can you please approve this PO, we're trying to get it, so we can set it up for trainings. And this is a training that is three months down the line. If we put another meeting in place that we have to stop that training, we might lose that date with that company. So there's just, you know, that's the federal side of things. We try to spend all the money, sometimes we don't. We've been lucky to get the amount of money that we do. And then the way I'm thinking about it is with S R three, that's the largest grant we've ever seen in the state of Texas, in the United States. We're going to have a very large amount of money to, you know, for us to have to tell a principal, hey, you went over twenty-five thousand, you can't order, you're going to have to wait, go to board. At this point, if we didn't do it in the summer, completely planning for the entire year, you know, we're going to miss out. Our kids are going to have to wait for some of these things to go to board, to get approved, and then go through the PO process and then go get to order them. So, you know, I, just from what I see, my recommendation would be, you know, to leave it as is, but of course, it's your own decision, and we will do what we have to do.
You know, this year, we had very unprecedented times, so a lot of different purchases had to be made, you know? Hand sanitizers, computers, equipment, software programs, a lot of different things that if the schools open up next year, it'll go back to normal. So then you are, you know, at the departments, at the campuses, would already know how to pre-plan for that. This was unexpected, so I could see how it could have put a burden on you if it had been less.
And the burden, it's not a burden to me, I will approve either way. And you said the pre-planning of it. So I know when we do our local funds, I was a principal before, I had to do a budget for what was upcoming, the year upcoming, so that way Ms. Perez can put funds in different accounts. It's very different with federal funds. We have a lot more hoops to go through, a lot more approvals to go through, but we also have a little bit more leeway. You know, the Edgar compliance, they put a fifty thousand, that is their recommendation. They put fifty thousand dollars as what they feel is, should be going to board. Now, yes, we can lower the threshold, that's a local decision, and local will always trump the state or federal. They always tell us it's the highest of the thresholds that you have to go with. So if you all feel that it should be lowered, then it's lowered. But that's what, with that being said, it's just a little more flexible for the teachers, I mean, for the teachers, for the principals to be using our federal funds and not have to come to board for approval and things like that, so, yeah, that's just my opinion.
Dwight, I don't see anybody that's been here before this current superintendent, right?
I was here.
You were here back then, what was the threshold back then? With previous superintendents?
I remember we did go through a period where we were at fifty thousand. I don't remember, I wasn't in the approval process at that time. To me, from my knowledge, since I've been a principal, it's always been at fifty thousand. And when we're looking at some of the campuses that have larger budgets, you know, I, the high school alone gets a very large budget, and to tell the principal, hey, you're going to have to order in smaller increments, or you're going to have to present to the board and get approval for items that we're usually used to, you know, a campus of twenty-three hundred, that's a lot of school supplies, that's a, you know, last year alone, I think we did a thirty, right at the, you know, we were at the end of the year, we were gathering money. I told Dr. Carmen we had this amount that campuses didn't use. We were able to turn that into giving it right back to the community for school supplies, everything that was, you know, allowable for a federal program. So we were able to work with Ms. Gonzalez and say, hey, order. Within two weeks, we had supplies, we didn't have to go to board, and the supplies were in the student's hands, so. Just an example. And you're right, I mean, it's not a normal year, this was very different. But last year was a normal year, and we did have issues when some campuses didn't spend as much as others. And so then we're trying to find out what in the summer, this is the time of the year that we're trying to figure out, okay, this is our extra, let's spend, let's make sure we're ready. But then we've got to get into the whole stockpiling, federal. We can't, I can't allow them to purchase for twelve months in advance because our federal grants don't coincide with the school year grants. So it's not allowed to say, go ahead in August, purchase, because you're still allowed to use this past year's funds in August, go ahead and purchase for the year, well, it's not allowed because that's, you're already saying, I'm going to use it for next year. So that's just some of the hoops we'll have to jump over. If the decision's made, then the decision's made.
Thank you, Mr. Perez, I guess it's very obvious why other six A school districts don't have that threshold. You know, so I guess in my opinion, you know, I guess in my opinion, you know, if we're struggling financially, then I think it would be something to look at, but we're not. I mean, you know, we're, once again, in a standing, you know. Most of the board members here went through that audit, and, you know, they said we were doing great, financially, we're doing decent. You know, this COVID situation, of course, put a hinder on some things, but, you know, just to, you know, to affect the day-to-day operations, it's kind of, to me, it's a little absurd, you know? But anyway, I'm glad that each and every one of you are here to present and continue coming up, please, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a quick question to Dr. Carmen. Prior to COVID, sir, has the limit always been fifty thousand?
Oh, yes, sir, it's fifty thousand, when I got here, it's been fifty thousand the whole time.
So prior to any of us coming on the board, it's always been fifty thousand?
Prior to any of you coming on the board, prior to my arrival in San Diego, yes, sir, it was fifty thousand. Thank you.
I looked up the student population in Brownsville, because Brownsville does have a fifty thousand threshold. However, Brownsville is three times bigger than us, they have forty-two thousand students, we have nine thousand five hundred students.
Los Fresnos is going to be the most comparable to our size in student population, and they're at fifty thousand.
Good evening, Dr. Carmen, board members. My name is Adeselis Soto, and I'm the child nutrition director. I'm going to bring in some insight of the day-to-day services we provide for our students and the large amount of purchase orders. One of our larger purchase orders that we, vendors that we work with is Labatt, Nichos Produce and Gulf Coast. We do weekly purchase orders anywhere between thirty-five thousand dollars to fifty thousand dollars. For Nichos Produce, we have to do that amount twice a week. And for Gulf Coast, we do that amount weekly as well. This allows us to continue moving forward with the service of the students. Even with this time that we've been going through this challenging time, we've been doing the same. If we go to full face-to-face, which that's the plan and the hope, we're expecting hopefully a larger participation in child nutrition service, meaning that we're either going to continue doing these POs or it may even increase in order for us to continue moving forward with the service. So will it affect child nutrition? Yes, it will affect child nutrition. Can, we do not have the space to be able to order in a whole month's worth of supply and supply it or save it somewhere, store it somewhere. I don't know if you've had the chance to visit some of our kitchens, our refrigerators and freezers are extremely small to even be able to hold one week's worth of product, much less two weeks, three weeks. We have to order on a weekly basis, we order two weeks in advance, but once the order is done, that is when we start working on that purchase order, which is in the amounts that I just previously gave you. And I think that if we have to order larger, or two or three weeks in advance, we would have a huge storage issue of product and merchandise at this time. That's how I can see, it'll be a challenge for us.
Mrs. Soto, even if we spent the hundreds of thousands to add in the coolers, would you want to keep milk or produce for a month at a time?
No, sir, because, not only because any changes that can have, we, I've experienced power outages even with just a mild wind that passed by, and we're very concerned about the product and that we've lost milk, milk product that we've had to throw out. Luckily, we haven't lost any of our items in the freezer, but we have to move fast and move it over to our freezer and, you know, do changes. Nothing that we cannot do. It'll just be greater challenges we'd be facing.
Help me to understand, because I don't understand why you would have to order a month in advance if you, I mean, I understand you have consumables, right, it's food, it's perishable, and so you order often.
Not ordering a month in advance, storing, if we're going to be approving POs, if I have to order this on a weekly basis, let's say forty thousand on a weekly basis, and what is the threshold that we're looking at, twenty-five thousand?
Twenty-five thousand.
So if I need to put in those POs to get them approved, wouldn't I need to have a few of those in a month? Or how would that work if I can?
You would be able to put in several POs and post-date them for the future. I mean, you have menus that you work on. So you have your menus a month in advance, at least, if not a year in advance. And so you would be able to make those ahead of time by post-dating them and getting them approved through the board.
But in case for emergencies, like if the milk did spoil and you needed to order it right away, you wouldn't be able to because you'd have to come to the.
That is correct.
Has the milk ever spoiled?
We've had, we had one or two occasions with this, with one with the bad weather that we had, and this last time where we had the power outage, we had concerns.
That happened statewide, actually, with the power, that major power outage and that big freeze, you know, everybody lost electricity in those places, and so that did cause a lot of food to go to waste.
Good evening again. So I was told I needed to come and present again. Talking, I'm going to be okay. This does affect my department because my buses break down. I have five of them that are over nine-plus years old, and I just recently received the quotes for twenty-seven thousand to thirty-three thousand to repair, replace engines and transmissions. And as our buses are getting older, I know I'm going to have another couple or three or four that are going to need repairs. When one of our buses is out of commission, I have no spares on my lot. I already have to double. I have to tell another driver, you're going to pick up Route sixteen's kids, you're going to pick up sixteen's AM, you're going to pick up the middle, you're going to pick up the high school. So we start splitting students up, and then parents are concerned. Why didn't bus twenty-three come? Well, it's out of commission, as soon as it comes back from the shop, we're going to send it out there. It takes three to five days to get our buses back. Repair and replace the engine and transmission is five to ten days. It just depends how backed up they are at the shops where we send them to. So if I would have to wait for a PO to go to the board to approve a twenty-seven thousand dollar repair and replacement, that's going to be a burden because as buses are breaking down on me, I'm having to double somewhere else when it's easier to just go ahead and submit the request for the PO, get it sent off as soon as it's approved, which Ms. Perez is very good about approving those really quick because she knows we're in dire need for buses to get our kids to and from school every day. So it would really affect our department if you were to lower that threshold to twenty-five thousand. So I hope you reconsider keeping it to fifty thousand to keep serving our students. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Eddie Cavasos, I'm the purchasing director for the school district. My role in this is I, my department is charged with purchasing student incentives for the district. In other words, every six weeks, students buy for prizes from televisions, Legos, Xboxes, headphones, you name it. You know, we try to. You know, we try to reward the kids for attending school. I think this past six weeks, we purchased maybe about $35,000 worth of incentives for all the children. It was about 10, 12 campuses that, that qualified and that's great. The only thing is that it's getting increasingly difficult, if you go to a Walmart, to look for electronics. I don't know if you all have noticed, but electronics are getting kind of scarcer. We can't buy them in bulk. Uh, for some reason, they're just not available. So we need to try to buy them when they're there. I try to plan ahead, ahead of time and I try to purchase here and there, but if ever comes to a point that I need to buy them right there and then and it's over 25,000, I'm going to have to wait to come to the board in order to purchase those gifts that we need to give to the kids for their student attendance. Now, I encourage you, I had never been to one, but I went to one ceremony where the kids are there giving, you know, they're raffling off their prizes at the schools and it's such a treat to see these kids, you know, they're, they're praying to get these gifts, you know, for perfect attendance. Of course, we're rewarding these kids for them coming to school and it's such a joy. And I'm so glad that Mr. Ramirez, when he was at De La Fuente invited me or at Angela Liala invited me to one of those ceremonies and it was so heartwarming to see these kids. I mean, they take their dolls and their, so that's maybe one of the instances that I think it would affect my department. You know, these kids, they're with their perfect attendant. Like I said, this past six weeks, it was 35,000. I think we were lacking maybe three or four campuses. If there's one, six weeks, that all the campuses are going to qualify, we're looking at 40, 45,000 more. And like I said, electronics are increasingly more difficult to purchase. I purchase a lot of the stuff online, but they don't let me buy in bulk. It's only one or two. So.
Thank you, Mr. Cavasus.
So here's a question, uh, Dr. Carmen. I had seen in the, um, check registers that there are payments made out to companies and so forth, let's say like, uh, that young company, um, that I mentioned earlier. And I've seen payments of over 300,000 made out to food service, SFE. So how, what's the process on that? Because it doesn't come to approve, to the board for approval.
They do. They're open POs. We do them at the beginning of the year. I think we do it for fuel also. Uh, we estimate where we're going to use the entire year, we enter it and, and that's fine. Um, I guess I would ask what the intent of changing to $25,000 is. I, I think it was explained to me that the board, um, at least board officers wanted more oversight. Uh, but if we move to a process where we approve, um, a Labat's PO at the beginning of the year for, you know, 1.2 million dollars, we are still not going to have that oversight because all our business office is going to do is process those invoices as those orders are placed. You're going to see one open PO at the beginning of the year and that's fine. I just don't know if that would increase the, the oversight that I think you all are, are, are trying to get here. And I assume that's the intent of trying to lower the, uh, the threshold from 50 to 25. And I don't know who that came from specifically, which board member. And I think Mr. Moreno sent that to me, but I'm, I'm guessing on the questions, maybe it came from either him or Ms. Lopez. Um, so maybe you could explain the intent of the desire to do that and if we could answer the questions, um, and direct me what your intent is.
The intent, uh, Dr. Carmen, thank you for that, that, that request. Uh, at this point, uh, contrary to, and I don't mean this in, in any disrespect, Mr. Lopez, but, uh, you mentioned earlier, sir, that most of us were here for the external and internal audits. No, we were not. You know, I understand you were and yes, we may have come back with good results, but at this point in time, what we, what we're opting to do is we, uh, feel that we need more oversight on the budget and financial matters. Uh, we want transparency, as we mentioned to our constituents when we ran for these positions. We want transparency both financially and fiscally. Uh, and so, uh, that is the rationale for, for, uh, this request. Now, at a later time, you know, once we, you know, there are other audits that, that will be coming, that are forthcoming to make sure that we do have sound, uh, finances, uh, you know, uh, in the future. And so, uh, if the board, uh, you know, once we vote on this, if, whatever way it goes, uh, if we choose to keep the $50,000 threshold or move it down to 25, 30,000, whatever the case may be, uh, if we opt at a later time to increase that as well because of any problems that we see in, 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 uh, students not getting what they need or, uh, services not being provided in a timely manner, then we can always come back. At, at this point in time, it's just a matter of transparency, both fiscally and financially.
Well, I think, I think we've done a pretty decent job as far as I'm concerned with fiscal being responsible too. Uh, we are, once again, I'm going to say this again for the 20th time, we're an A-rated school district for a reason. Our financial department has done a tremendous job. Dr. Carmen's been a good steward of the money. Uh, the board, the previous board that was here was physically responsible and I, I think honestly, this is just a micromanagement move and I think it's unnecessary at this moment in time with such a, a big school district. Uh, I think you guys should be working, uh, with less pressure instead of more pressure to try to meet deadlines, uh, just because the board thinks you need to micromanage the finances of our, of our institution. Uh, I'm a firm believer in respecting the situ, the situation of our paid professional employees and I'm going to stand by that. So I want to thank you guys so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
And just to add a comment here as well, I'm looking at the 2020, uh, audit report that was done. It was for the year end, ended June the 30th. We did have, on our fund balance, we were at 21 million and some dollars, right? Um, however, when it comes to our fund balance, we're supposed, we should have been at a 15% of expenses, which would have been about 29 million dollars. So that means that we had a deficit of about $8 million by looking at the audits report, the auditor report here. Okay? And so then, um, if I go to BBA legal policy, it says that the board, legal status, powers and duties, that's what it's titled, the board is supposed to monitor district finances to ensure that the superintendent is properly maintaining the district's financial procedures and, and records. Ensure that district fiscal accounts are audited annually as required by education code and we want to be able to meet those, uh, requirements because that was, um, yes, we got a A rating on that, however, it did dock us some points and, um, as a school board member, it's our duty to oversee the finances. And as far as, uh, storage, I think that, um, a lot of what you purchase, Mr. Perez, that goes to the campuses, so campuses do have storage for that. Um, if we do the open POs, I think that that would help as well, just with the stuff that is normal, day-to-day stuff that needs to be bought. When it comes to maybe contracts or other things like that that are above the 25,000, I think that it's important to, for the board to have oversight. And, um, in the case where there's emergencies, like, uh, Ms. Martinez said, you know, with broken buses and so forth, I think that, um, if there's any emergencies or something, we can give the power to the superintendent and the president, board member to be able to, um, approve those purchases that need to be made that are crucial to the district. And if we need to come back and revise things in the future because, um, you know, there's an emergency or whatever, they can handle it. You know, we can trust them to, to handle that situation.
I'm going to put my two cents in here as well. So we've heard from all the directors and we know that it'll affect their day-to-day jobs. And we're here sitting on the board to make decisions for the staff and for the students. So we've already heard from the, and the taxpayers. So we've already heard from them that it's going to affect their jobs, it'll affect the staff and in some cases, it will affect the students. Secondly, Ms. Lopez has mentioned she wants budget training. I'm a new board member, I would like budget training. Mr. Medrano and Mr. Silva have not been seated on the board for a while, so they've also expressed the need for budget training. Mr. Moreno, I understand that he does run a, a middle school in Ruohondo, so he may be a little bit more savvy with this. Mr. Lopez has been on the board for a certain amount of time. Mr. Corona, Ms. Lopez and Ms. Moreno all got on the board in November. We don't know what's going on with the budget. These people know what's going on with the budget. They've sat in these chairs and we hired them for a job, so they're doing their job. I suggest we table the $50,000. Last, at the committee meeting last week, Mr. Moreno stated that he, he had, when it came to the audits, my interest is being in the school system for as many years as I have been, I am familiar with some organizations that could have provided some good feedback, good external audits that were not among the four. So until we get feedback from those audits, that whoever we choose, this board here chooses to do the external audits, I think we should table this and leave it at $50,000 so that we as a board are not affecting the day-to-day operations of the school district.
Well, and, and like I said, you know, um, there was already a deficit, so it's important that we take action already.
If I can comment on that now? The board policy does say that the fund balance needs to be 10 to 15% of the entire operating budget and our budget is 128 million. That would be a 12.8 minimum fund balance that we would need to have. The decrease in fund balance is correct, however, that was statewide and that was due to the CARES Act money that was supplanted. So everybody who got CARES Act money did have their overall budget reduced by the, that amount. In our case, it was 4.7 million. And on top of that, we had a reduction of ADA, which lowered our overall funding and that was reflective in place of that 4.7 million. So there was a decrease. It was not due to overspending. It was done as part of a state mandate. So, yes, we did have a decrease in our fund balance, but that was not for lack of financial oversight.
So you have estimated costs, right? That's the original budget that you all have.
Correct.
That the board adopts, right?
Mm-hmm.
So you have an estimated of expenditures.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? And then based on federal money, state money, depending on what they decide to give the districts, whether they give you all the funding or not, then that's going to be dependent on that, right?
Correct.
So, so every year, it's the same thing though. Every year, you're depending on whatever the state funds will be.
Correct.
Okay? Because I've seen, uh, for the past three years, I looked at some of the reports, right? And there, there were deficits, but the, the fund balance was okay.
Correct. And this year, that one was done. Those differences in our fund balance had to have taken place in May. And if you recall, we had some leadership absent at that point, so there was no way that we could have brought that to the board to make up for that. So there was no way that we would have been able to bring that to the board. That is where that miscommunication is. Again, that, the deficits in the previous year, those were actually board-approved items that the board had done as far as, um, some bond, I'm sorry, not bond projects, some construction projects, um, parking lots, some roofing, Dr. Carmen, there was some other items. Um, those were all planned, those were planned with the superintendent and the board. So that was in an effort to use our fund balance towards our students. So this past year, yes, you are correct, there was a decrease in our fund balance, but it was not for lack of oversight.
Ms. Perez, I think it's, that's a very good point to, to, um, to express because every single dollar went back to our kids, it didn't go anywhere else.
Correct.
So we reinvested back into our school. We got mon, uh, uh, we got all, you know, all kinds of stuff. You know, we, we did all, pretty much all the, enclosed all the building, I mean, all the basketball courts and we did all kinds of stuff, put fences around for security reasons for kids, you know, the marquees, we put marquees in all the schools. So I think those are very important things to highlight when you're talking about the, you know, the lack of, you know, the decreased amount in the fund balance because it all went back to our kids for the most part. Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Vicki.
Yes, sir.
So at this time, I would, I would like to, uh, you know, to make a motion to table this item, please.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to table this item, uh, by Mr. Orlando Lopez. All those in favor, uh, raise your right hand. All those opposed, raise your right hand. Okay, motion fails. Once again, uh, due to, uh, what the, the board feels, uh, at this point, uh, that we do need more oversight and I do want to thank all our directors for being here. Uh, we want to, uh, make sure that our board is being transparent, both financially and fiscally. I move to amend the district's board policy, CH local, as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Moreno, a second by Oscar Medrano. Do, uh, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, raise your right hand. Okay, so the motion carries for three. Thank you.
Mr. Moreno, uh, for the record, I did submit my, I work with Gulf Coast Paper Company and I did submit my conflict of interest paperwork today.
Thank you for that, Mr. Silva. Appreciate that. Thank you, folks. Appreciate your time. All righty, moving on to agenda item number 5.5. Consideration and possible action regarding the following matters. One, termination of the district's legal services contracts with Flores and Torres LLP, Ohanlan, Demerith and Castillo PC, Roaring Oliveira and Fisher LLP and D. Thomas Rayfield. And two, pursuant to the board's authority under board policy, BDD Local, approval of a contract for the engagement of the district's new legal services provider to serve as a district general counsel and provide other legal services and authorizing the execution of that contract. And three, authorizing any other actions as necessary to carry out those matters in the best interest of the district. Dr. Carmen?
Uh, yes, sir. So we have the recommendation from, uh, this came from the board president. To terminate all of the, um, legal agreements that are, we have with the school district, including general counsel, uh, two attorneys we use specifically for DIA investigations, um, and then the, uh, firm that we use for special education and HR consulting. And replace with, um, a law firm that, um, if I could read, sorry, Bickerstaff Heath, um, Delgado and Acosta, uh, based out of Austin and has recently opened a McCallan office, to my understanding. I will open it up, I guess, to discussion.
And we do have, uh, Mr. Stephen Weller, uh, one of the attorneys from Bickerstaff here to answer any questions. So can we call on him at this time?
I think they're getting him.
While he's walking in the room, um, so, mm, about 12 minutes ago, Mr. Moreno, you called for transparency regarding the funds and things like that. Where was the transparency in getting together with this, with Bickerstaff Heath, Delgado and Acosta? Because this is the first time we hear about it and there's already an agreement on the table?
Where is the agreement? I don't see where the agreement is on the table, ma'am.
In the attachments on board docs.
That's up for discussion. There is no agreement.
So did we send out RFQs on this?
We do not need RFQs for, uh, for this type of matters.
But you want transparency.
Yes, and, and, uh, we are talking about transparency and we're here to discuss. So if you'll sit and listen and ask questions with this attorney that's coming in, you may get your questions answered.
Mr. Moreno, without due respect, who wrote the agenda, sir? Can you refer the record, please? Who wrote the agenda for you?
Uh, our attorneys, myself and Dr. Carmen.
Who's your attorneys? Did Ms. Flores, did you write the agenda, Mr. Torres? No?
You know, we did participate in every other, uh, agenda item. This one was not presented to us either for review or consideration.
Okay, so is it, is it good to ask or is it common practice to ask or for us that, that of course are left out of the loop in this whole process? Is it good to ask for any type of, um, correspondence between, uh, Mr. Moreno and the way this whole thing planned out with the, with the attorney that's coming on board? But via email or personal email or so on and so forth?
Would that be without, without? The answer, I'm sorry, go ahead.
A, a public information request could be filed.
Okay, sir. Yeah, because you know, here, I mean, you, you want to talk about, you want to, you know, change general counsel, you know, and you have a couple of board members that have only been here less than a week or a week and a half or maybe two. There was no evaluation tool. I mean, Mr. Moreno, you're, you know, you're an educator, you know, you, you know the way you evaluate your staff with a T-test and T-PES and, and so on and so forth. So, you know, was there any concerns with this, this law firm? Number one. Number two, you know, in the education field, you give people an opportunity to, to, to rectify the situation, there was any issues. Uh, and number three, you know, I mean, how much are they going to charge us? I mean, you know, we have Ms. Jenny Lopez where they're talking about, you know, being good stewards of money. You know, I want to know in this agreement, how much are they going to charge us per hour and, um, and so on and so forth. So there's a lot of concerns here. I mean, of course, we want to talk about transparency, but I think this is a rushed deal and, and, um, you know, I just, I don't, I don't think it's, uh, you know, very, very up in the open. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez, and, and I'd like to comment before we bring in Mr. Weller as well. Uh, all, we, we've got, uh, I requested from Dr. Carmen, uh, all legal counsel, uh, uh, contracts, and he provided me with four, each of which goes up to almost 50,000, almost[1719.86] almost a $50,000 threshold. So, not even, uh, so we have two, uh, conducting DIA business, one general counsel, one, uh, dealing with possible, I don't recall exactly, but I believe, Dr. Carmen, you mentioned it may be for grievance matters that reach a certain level. Uh, so, that's four different legal consuls, uh, at at roughly $48,000. No RFQs. We're done. So, yes, I am being transparent in in reference to that. We, there are no RFQs necessary. So, once again, uh, my fellow colleagues here, if you have any questions for, uh, this gentleman that, uh, represents a possible, a law firm that we would like to engage with, uh, you're more than welcome to to ask him. And with that, I give you Mr. Weller.
Are there more possible?
Flores and Torres did submit their qualifications.
I'm sorry?
My firm did submit its qualifications.
Okay.
Dr. Carmen, um, was there? I forgot what you all call it.
RFQs?
Transparency. Was there transparency on the company, Rorig Oliveta and Fisher? Apparently, there's a relationship between one of the board members and that company. Was there any transparency on that?
What do you mean, was there any transparency on it? Did we do an RFQ? Is that what you're asking? For for the Rorig agreement? No.
On the?
Did the board approve it? No. Um, I authorized it, um, up to $49,500. And then, uh, previous board appointed them to do, to conduct one at DIA. Um, that total bill was $8,105. And while we can use them up to $49,500, I I think I should point out for DIAs, when a, uh, when an attorney is used, the board appoints the, um, the attorneys that we have on retainer. So, I don't appoint them to do that. The board does. Um, as far as transparency, again, when you come out of executive session, you approve the use of an attorney to conduct a DIA investigation, and...
So, Dr. Carmen, when you say you appoint, if I may interject?
You cannot use, um, the same attorney that's used as general counsel to represent for DIA. So, if these are terminated tonight, that's all well and good. But the board, um, if they want that authority and to take it away from me to sign up attorneys less than 50,000, you're you're welcome to it. Um, but you're going to still have to replace a DIA attorney, at least one. Um, and then, we need to have discussions regarding special education, um, representation for administration through grievance processes, hiring back one general counsel attorney for a district this size is not going to facilitate the operations of the size of a district.
Okay. And, uh, going back to Rorig and Oliveta, I did see the contract that was signed by Randall Gomez, and, uh, it didn't have a date on, from the district as to when the district accepted that contract. So, when did the district accept that contract?
I can look that up for you momentarily. Um, I don't think I sent you the signed copy. I think I just sent you what I had saved on my laptop, but, um, I I can tell you here in just a moment.
And, Dr. Carmen, just for the record as well, BDD Local does state that the boards shall retain an attorney or attorneys as necessary to serve as a district's legal counsel and representative in matters requiring legal services. And as for my conversation with you, and you just admitted to it as well, uh, we did not have RFQs, and we, and these, uh, these attorneys or these legal consuls were not appointed by the board. They were appointed by you. Is that correct?
They weren't appointed, um, sir. I signed the agreements to retain their services. Um, I signed three retainer agreements. And yes, sir, as you and I discussed, um, before I entered into the agreement with, uh, the Rayfield Law Firm, um, I did communicate with our current general counsel. Um, I have a copy of the emails here where I sent the agreement to him. Um, and and the response was, yes, it's, it falls within my, um, authorization to be able to sign such an agreement. Um, then subsequently, for Rorig, um, I signed a similar agreement with general counsel's knowledge. Um, the opinion of our general counsel is that policy as written applies to the general counsel, um, not attorneys that are assigned on retainer for DIA or other services for administration. Um, additionally, if you note in the retainers for Rayfield and Rorig, they both have limits under 50,000.
Correct.
Where it indicates that if it goes past that, you would have to come to the board for approval. So, I have four separate law firms who, um, who believe that I had the authority to enter into these agreements. Um, so, I feel like I'm a pretty, pretty good, uh, ground there with, uh, with the legal representation, sir.
Thank you, sir.
I would also like to point out that my firm was board-approved.
Thank you, Mr. Flores. With that, can we invite Mr. Weller in for any questions from, uh, board members?
Mr. Moreno, I had one quick question, sir.
Yes, sir.
You said that you and your attorneys did the did the agenda. Which attorney, sir?
We we submitted, uh, the agenda item to, uh, Mr., to, uh, uh, Dr. Carmen. No attorneys were were present with, uh, with the, uh, agenda item.
Gotcha. Thank you, sir.
Sorry for that. We, thank you for allowing me to clarify.
Mr. Flores, how do you interpret? Yes, sir, this is Orlando here. How how do you interpret this, uh, you know, this this line item here? This agenda item, how do you interpret it?
Well, the way I look at it, um, one, it's 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 not very clear the way it's drafted, but the way I read it, there's going to have, if they choose to take this action, they have to take a vote on all lawyers as a whole. If you read the way it's listed, it says A, B, and ABC, and D. If they intended for it to go one by one, there was said and/or, like they did in the section 5.4 above. So, what they're going to have to do, if they want to take a vote, it's going to have to be on all, uh, four, uh, firms.
So, so just to be clear, we're going to vote on all, all attorneys on this list, sir, sir?
In one vote.
Thank you for the clarification, sir. Okay.
Mr. Weller, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. President, Detective Carmen, and, uh, members of the board. Uh, my name is Stephen Weller. I'm an attorney, uh, with the law firm of Bickerstaff Heath, Delgado Acosta. And, uh, I'm very pleased to be here tonight. Um, it is, uh, we're honored and and flattered to be considered by the by the district to provide, uh, legal services for you. Um, uh, we have, as a law firm, I can tell you a little bit about us. Um, the law firm began about 40 years ago, uh, when two attorneys from the Texas Attorney General's Office, uh, came over and decided that they wanted to, uh, dedicate a practice to serving local governmental entities. Um, since that time, uh, the firm has grown to 26 attorneys, which it is right now. Uh, we currently have offices in Austin, uh, El Paso, uh, Houston, and we're in the process of opening up, uh, an office here with a physical space here. We've, uh, involved ourselves in in, uh, with some attorneys, uh, from former city attorneys from the McAllen area, and we're very excited about that opportunity. Um, the firm has really dedicated itself to the concept of being a full-practice law firm for, uh, local government. Um, we have attorneys all around, uh, excuse me, we have, uh, clients all around the state. Uh, they include school districts, they include higher education entities, they include cities, they include counties, water districts. Um, we we really model ourselves as a firm that attempts to be a a full-service law firm. We, uh, we're, we are, uh, we call ourselves a one-stop shop. Uh, kind of like to think that we're the Swiss Army knife of of local government. Um, we, uh, the firm has 26 lawyers, as I mentioned. Um, some of the history of the law firm, in, uh, about 2005, we expanded our firm and partnered with, um, a firm in El Paso. And, uh, now, the the named partners in the firm are, uh, Bickerstaff Heath, Delgado Acosta. And at various times of the firm, um, we have, we've been very proud to be, uh, one of the largest, uh, minority-owned and female-owned law firms in the state of Texas. Um, with the percentage of our ownership, at various times, as attorneys came in and out, we've, we've been one of the larger minority and and, uh, female-owned firms in the, in the, in the state. Uh, we try to pride ourselves on providing very high-level legal services. Uh, we try to, um, do everything we can to help the school district. I, as a general counsel, have, uh, been working for school districts and for other local governmental entities, uh, since, uh, 2005. I attended the University of Texas, uh, graduated in 1999. Uh, I went to Baylor Law School and got out in, uh, 2002. I started, uh, my practice, uh, around that time. In 2005, I joined a school law firm, uh, named, uh, Hensley Schwartz. In 2011, I moved to my current law firm, uh, Bickerstaff Heath. Um, myself, um, as a governmental practitioner, uh, I've been really lucky as a general counsel and in providing what we would call more specialty legal work, uh, as outside counsel for in-house attorneys for larger organizations. So, some of our work is GC work, some of our work is general school law work, some of our work is specialty work. Um, and I've been really lucky and have enjoyed the process of, uh, practicing in a lot of different areas, such as, uh, construction, uh, law, both as, uh, representing school districts, both as a plaintiff and defendant. I've handled a lot of employment law matters. I've handled, uh, we do a lot of PIA and, uh, and open records training and open meetings training for board members. We, you know, I've handled insurance matters. I've handled injury cases. Um, I I enjoy the process of involving myself in the district and trying to do the best we can for the district at a high level and with a high level of integrity. Um, let me talk to you a little bit about the three or four things that I try to do as an attorney. Um, I try to provide responsive client service. Um, school districts and other local government, you need responsive attention from your attorneys. Um, school business does not confine itself to an eight-to-five job. Um, school districts need help. They need their attorneys to be available on nights and weekends and to respond to the needs that you have. Um, I think that a lot of my relationships with my clients have been built on trust and on making myself available. Um, another thing that I like to do is provide personal attention. Um, I think that the the client relationship really benefits when you have a single point of contact. Um, the attorney in those circumstances can involve themselves in understanding the internal processes of the client, understanding what their administrative structure is, what their procurement rules are, what their personnel tendencies are, understanding their internal regulations, and attempting, if we can, to complement those, make suggestions if they're helpful. But the point being, uh, a single point of contact, somebody who provides consistency and continuity for the client is a lot of what I've done to to build my practice around. Um, as I mentioned, we're a full governmental, uh, a full-service governmental firm. Um, I've, like I've said, done a lot of different, handled a lot of different areas of law. But if a client needs a real estate attorney, or they need consultation on a real estate matter, we have a board-certified real estate attorney. If they need, uh, if they have an employment matter, if they find themselves a defendant in an employment case, whether it be in state court or federal court, uh, which we've defended clients in both venues, we have a board-certified employment law attorney. We have bond counsel. Our bond attorney is a gentleman named David Mendez. He's from an area not far from here. He's from, uh, near Alice, Texas. Uh, we have, uh, so, we have a public finance practice. Uh, we have a redistricting practice right now that is, uh, ramping up with the the census being, uh, delayed a little bit. It's been set behind a little bit. But every 10 years, one of the things we do is we help, uh, clients around the state who need to redraw their, uh, their representative's districts to comport with federal law. So, uh, those are just a few examples of the, some of the same things that we do, both in a specialty realm and also in a general counsel realm. Um, the clients that we have range in all sizes. We have, we have big clients, we have medium-sized clients, we have small clients. We understand that those different entities need different things. They need different levels of assistance and different levels of help, and we try to provide that to them. Uh, one of our, uh, larger clients that you might be familiar with is the Austin Community College District. It's an entity with almost 40,000 students and facilities, uh, around, uh, all around Travis County. We've been their general counsel for, uh, I believe, 16 or 17 years. Um, so, that's a little bit about us. And the last thing I want to mention, which is extremely important to me personally, and, um, in in representing the clients that that I do, is professionalism and objectivity. I've represented 7-0 boards, and I've represented 4-3 boards. And I give the right legal advice, no matter who asks the question. I view my role as to protect every administrator, every board member, to do the best job we can for you. I do not represent one person, or one group of people, or one administrator. I represent the entire district, and I take my duties in that regard very seriously. We're really flattered to be considered, and, uh, if we are allowed to work with the district, um, I you, I would invite anyone to to speak to us. Uh, and I would go out of my way to try to be, uh, as fair and as transparent and as neutral with you all as I possibly could be. Um, so, with that, if there are any questions of me?
Mr. Weller, be, uh, thank you for your presentation, and I will open it up for questions from my colleagues here. One of the things that I do want to mention is, is, uh, you know, in my conversation, short conversation with with Dr. Carmen, uh, we, uh, I gave him my opinion in reference to, uh, our new board, okay? Uh, six out of seven are fairly new, uh, to to being on the board once again. And, uh, I feel that we need a clean slate. We need a clean start. There, uh, in in, and this isn't unique to Samanito CISD, but not only, and it, there's good things and bad things, but forming relationships with with, uh, attorneys and and legal counsel is one thing, but having ties outside, uh, you know, of the school district, and even, uh, ties that from current, uh, uh, legal counsel that are servicing, uh, our, uh, school district, having close ties, uh, still with, uh, with, uh, board members that are no longer part of our board, is something that concerns me as board president. I do want a fresh start, and I applaud you for saying that you're not here to represent me. You're not here to represent, uh, Mr. Lopez. You're not here to, you're here to represent the board, and that you're your time, and and you're going to do your due diligence in in providing your honest answer to e- each and every one of our board members here tonight. So, uh, thank you for your presentation, and I open it up for questions.
So, Mr. Moreno, did you say honest answers? So, this wasn't like a job opening or anything like that that you applied for? Somebody had to reach out to you, correct?
I I've I've known a couple of the board members.
So, it's not a clean slate?
Not a clean slate.
Board members, like, what do you mean, sir? He just said that he didn't, he didn't know anybody, or he didn't know you. So, can you say that again? You said you know a couple of board members. Who would you know on this board, sir?
Who do I know?
On this board?
I know the board president.
Okay.
And I know, uh, uh, Ms. Lopez.
Okay, so what's the difference in Mr. Moreno saying now that the, that previously you had a board, you want transparency, you had board members previously that had, you know, that knew outside of work or had, uh, you know, personal relationships or friendships with with presence? So, what's the difference now, Mr. Moreno, you have a?
The difference is that I don't have friendships with Mr. Weller. It's not a friendship relationship. It's a professional relationship that I'm working. I don't go out to dinner with Mr. Weller. I don't go on fishing trips with Mr. Weller. And so, that's what I'm talking about when it comes to transparency and an open slate for everybody on this board.
But it's not an open slate for everybody. You have, he knows you, and he knows Ms. Lopez. You just said you wanted a clean slate. This isn't a clean slate.
I know Mario. I know you. I know Mr. Lopez. That doesn't mean we have a relationship.
We're from the same community.
So, if I may finish, please. Just because you know a person doesn't mean you have a relationship, because I know for a fact that one of you in here has a romantic relationship with one of, with with somebody from one of the, uh, attorneys. One of the law firms that's on here. And Randall Gomez was a man that represented the former board member that was taken out of the school district, that, uh, was suspended and eventually stepped down. So, he represented that board member as well. And so, we need new leaders, new, new attorneys that will be fair so that we can protect the district and our staff.
I'm not questioning the need for new attorneys. I'm questioning why we don't have more options to choose from if we want a clean slate.
Because at this point, Ms. Dr. Lopez, I mean, Dr. Cruz, we, uh, we, uh, it's been the norm, from what I can see, that we did not go out for RFQs. I don't see a need to go out for RFQs, and I'm ready to move on as as a board. And this is going to be, uh, this is going to come up to a vote. It's not a vote of one person. It's a vote of the board.
I make a move. I make a motion to move.
I had a question, though.
We haven't finished our questions.
My question, sir?
We're here to discuss, okay, Mr. Corona, go ahead.
Dr. Carmen, our previous le- legal people that we had, did we ever have any issues with them? Was there any, any of them ever being ran up for anything or or addressed because they did something wrong?
Not to my knowledge, not in my, almost four years here, no, sir.
No, okay. And and another thing, so, Mr. Flores, what are, what are your attorney fees, if you don't mind me asking?
The maximum rate that we charge is $200 per hour, and we don't charge our, any fees for our travel, uh, to business meetings or board meetings, committee meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Flores. So, sir, now you coming aboard, what are your fees hourly, if you don't mind me asking?
I think the the fees in the, in the contract are $250 for general services work and $275 for specialty work. Um, you know, the...
When you say specialty work, sir, can you elaborate on that?
Certainly, certainly. Um, my experience working for districts similar to your size is that you have a variety of, of, uh, of topics that you're going to run into that are of a specialty nature. Um, co- uh, construction contracting is what I would define and as well-understood to be a specialty practice. Um, construction litigation is quite technical. Uh, whether you're defending as a district a cost-overrun claim from a contractor who wants to be paid more and believes that they have a condition on the contract, like an unforeseen site condition, and so on and so forth, that... like an unforeseen site condition and so on and so forth, that might become, uh, might become an issue in the contract. Uh, I've defended a case like that for a school district. Uh, construction matters are specialty work. Uh, we, we do election work, which I would consider specialty work. Um, uh, some of the employment law matters that we've handled are definitely more, uh, a little bit of a different vocabulary in terms of the understanding of, uh, litigation in federal courts and understanding the judges and knowing the judges, knowing the state court judges. Um, a lot of our, uh, the, uh, some of the different areas of law that we handle, I would characterize as, as, as specialized. Um, uh, I think that we could probably charge higher rates for that type of work, but it's, it's a local governmental entity and it's taxpayer money and we need to be conscious stewards of the district's funds. And so, you know, we haven't pitched anything higher than the rate that I, that I listed. Um, but with any relationship, it needs to be mutually beneficial. It needs to be mutually helpful. If the district has feedback about those rates, then that's fine and we can discuss that.
Okay, Mr. Flores, what is, you said your rate was two hundred dollars an hour and that's like a flat rate? Or do you have specialized hourly rates as well?
That is our flat rate, but I would also like to say, as I've got over fifteen years' experience doing construction work, I have a large construction work practice. Not only defending school districts, I suit school districts. I represent subcontractor, general contractors. So, we've got the same array of experience a- as, as the firm right now presenting for you.
Okay, and Mr. Weller, your, where is your office located? Cause you're gonna be the one in, with us at the school board, correct?
Aust- Austin.
Austin, so we would have to pay for your travel fees to our meetings.
I think that's negotiable, too, but, but, you know, um, you know, we wanna do what's best for the school district. Um, during the time that we travel, we don't sit behind the wheel and, you know, I, 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 I'm actually quite active during.
Yeah, I'm not questioning your qualifications. I understand that you're very qualified. I just wanted to know, because you're not locally from here, from Cameron County, um, how that, how you foresee that service looking?
Yeah, that's a fair question. Um, you know, generally speaking, what I find is that being responsive to the client is about, usually about picking up the phone or about participating in a team's meeting. Um, there are times when the attorney is needed, uh, personally, and we can certainly do that. But, um, unless you have an in-house general counsel, someone's gonna be coming from somewhere. Um, and the, you know, the trick is to make sure that what we're doing is satisfactory to you all.
Okay. How many six A school districts do y'all represent? Or do you, cause you're gonna be our attorney recording. How many six A schools do you represent?
You know, I, I represented a five A school district for seven and a half years.
So, no six, so no six A school districts?
Well, you know, it, I don't, I admit I don't have the, the designation of every school I've represented memorized. Um, I've represented school districts with, you know, a similar number of students to you. Seven thousand students, ten thousand students, you know, uh, so.
And any school districts here in the valley?
Yes.
Okay, which ones?
Roma ISD.
Are you, do you still have that contract with Roma?
No.
Okay.
Rio Grande City.
Do you still have that contract with Rio Grande City?
Uh, we still do work for them, yes, at times, yes.
But what kind of work do you do, sir? Mr. Weller, Mr. Longo here. What kind of work, are you a general counsel there, sir, or you just pick up, or specific work at, at Rio Grande ISD?
Um, for Rio, it was, it was, uh, we were never the general counsel. We did a lot of general, uh, school law services.
Okay, so I guess my question here is, you know, since it's very obvious that, uh, you were brought to the board, you know, cause you have a relationship with board members. So, I, I guess my question here is, um, um, how many s- school districts do you have? What's your representation here in the valley, period? Like, how many schools do you have? Or how much work do you do down here? Because it says on your website, you said you have an office in, in Idalou County, sir?
We do.
Okay, so you're also from Idalou County, which is interesting. So, um, so anyway, sir, can you please answer that question for me, please? How, how, what's your, 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 how much work do you have here in the valley besides?
We do, we've done work for different kinds of entities here in the valley. It's not always limited to schools. But right now, we, we work with San Asido ISD. Uh, we've done work with McMullen County ISD, Wymer ISD. Um, you know, uh, tomorrow I'll participate potentially in a board meeting for a river authority that's not too far from here.
So, currently in the valley, you don't have much work down here?
I've done a lot of work in the valley over the years.
But currently you don't have it?
Currently, I do have some work, but not, it's not my primary, uh, the majority of my clients are not here at this point, I'll put it that way.
And you also mentioned something that was very important to us, sir. Um, you know, uh, I've been on the board, you know, for over three years now, so it's very important to us. As you all know, I'm sure you heard, you know, our, uh, our financial rating is an A. We take our, our, our resources here, our financial, very important. So, we have several board members here that, that question every single dollar that's being spent. So, you know, uh, I, I think one of my main concerns is, you know, we're gonna increase legal fees, uh, you know, from two fifty for, for general and then specific, uh, you know, whatever at that time that presents. I think we oughta focus on that money and, and give it back to our teachers and our kids versus, you know, just making a rash decision and just changing legal counsel because of, you know, of the board majority's, you know, power grip that wants to, wants to change it. I mean, there was no evaluation tool saying that our, that our, that our legal practices or legal, you know, representation wasn't, wasn't up to par. I mean, you know, we never had a issue. So, I think, I wanna thank you, sir, thank you so much for that. But, yeah, I just, you know, at, at this moment in time, due to the increase in the, in the hourly rate and the specific, and the, and the specialty rate from two fifty to two seventy-five, I just want our constituents to know that that'll be taxpayer dollars going out, you know, versus staying in-house. So, at, at this moment in time, I wanna, I'll, I'll, I'll table to, uh, I'll make a motion to table this item.
There was a motion on the floor by Jane.
For, for what?
There was a motion on the ta- on the floor already by Ms. Lopez to, uh, I didn't, you didn't finish, ma'am? You didn't get the opportunity to finish?
To move on, uh, agenda item five point five?
I still had a question before, before that, if I can still ask.
Okay, we, we can, we, it, Mr. Medrano, thank you for that, but at this point, we, let, let's go ahead and move on because we, we do have to do our due diligence and allow our board members the opportunity to discuss. So, with that, Mr. Corona, you are correct. Uh, so right now, we do have a motion on the floor by, uh, Mr. Lopez to table this item. Uh, do we have a second?
A second, but I, I still wanna do the question.
Oh, you still have another question, sir? I'm sorry, go ahead. Of course, go ahead.
Mr. Weller, in all, in all respect, you said you know Mr. Moreno and Ms. Lopez. How long have you known them?
I'm not sure.
Approximately a year, two years, three years?
Maybe a year.
A year, so you've known them a year, cause Mr. Moreno, you said you wanted to start with a clean slate with the news.
That's correct.
So, knowing him, it's, I mean, you've known the gentleman, so apparently I don't know what type of relationship you had. Cause I, I took offense when you said that some of us have gone fishing. Were you throwing that at every board member or singling out?
No, sir, not singly, not any. I'm just mentioning the fact that there are relationships still, uh, with, with, uh, former board members and former ties with, with our, our current, uh, our current, uh, uh, legal teams. And at this point, I, I do assure you that I don't have a personal relationship with Mr. Weller. I, we did meet a, a while back and again, I'm just looking for the best interest of the district.
I understand that. When you say you did meet with him, may I ask who met with him, other than yourself?
I would not have, I don't have a question, I, I don't have an answer for that, sir, as far as who met.
With, with Mr. Weller, you said you all met.
No, I did not say that we met. I, I know who he is.
Did I misunderstand that? I'm sorry.
Yes, probably, or I miscommunicated.
He said he met with him.
He did say that, right?
Okay, so, Mr. Weller just mentioned that he knows Ms. Lopez and Mr. Moreno. Um, has, Mr. Silver, Mr. Medrano, have y'all ever talked to this lawyer that we're gonna bring in for more fees or anything like that?
I've met both of them.
You met both, Mr. Silver and Mr. Medrano?
Yes.
That could be a floating quorum, don't you think, sir?
No, sir, it was not.
Okay.
It's not.
Nothing like that.
All right, so, Mr. Flores. You talk to all four board members. You can count to four, correct?
Mr. Flores, would that be a walking quorum, of, Mr. Weller meeting with them?
I, I wouldn't have enough information to form an opinion about, but I'd have to know a lot more specifics. Based on the information I have, I, I couldn't form an opinion.
So, maybe we need to refer this to the DA?
So, the clean sa- slate of everybody wanting to get in on this and ha- open a, one big fam- happy family, y'all are just leaving us out of it?
We're not leaving you out. We're including you, Dr. Cruz. We're including you as far as asking you to start with a clean slate with new attorneys. Yes, ma'am?
After there's an agreement on the table.
There is not an agreement on the table. It's up for a vote. It's up for, for, it's up to be recommended.
Mr. Weller, would you give an ag- an agreement?
Given an agreement?
Yes, sir.
No.
For employment with, with the district?
No.
Of course you want. Okay, with that said, I'd like to go ahead and move then, uh, that we, uh, uh, terminate the district's legal, legal service contracts with, eh, Flores.
There's a previous motion, there's a previous motion to table.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, that is correct. We, it was to table, correct? Okay, so we had a motion on the floor to table the agenda item. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Corona, second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed? Okay, motion fails for three. Now, I'd like to move that we go ahead and recommend the termination of the district's legal service contracts with Flores, Torres, L L P, O'Hanlon, DeMarithen, Castillo, P C, C. Rorig, Oliveira, Fisher, L L P, and Thomas Rayfield, and pursuant to the board's authority under Board Policy B D D Local, which gives the board authority to hire, uh, legal counsel, the approval of a contract for the engagement of the district's new legal services provided to serve as a district general counsel and provide other legal services and authorizing the execution of that contract. And three, authorizing any other actions as necessary to carry out those matters in the best interest of the district. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor by Mr. Moreno, a second by Mr. Medrano. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed? Okay, motion carries for three.
Thank you.
If, if I may, uh, Mr. President, or President, I would just like to thank the San Benito C I S D, the San Benito community. You know, it, it's been an honor to represent this community for the past eight years. Uh, we developed some wonderful, uh, relationships, uh, wonderful district. I wish you guys the best. Again, it has been an honor for myself and my partner, Tony Torres, to represent this fine district.
Thank you, sir.
And we thank you as well.
We thank you for everything you've done.
You, Mr. Flores, and Mr. Torres as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very much, and with that being said, I'll go ahead and log out and I wish you guys the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Have a good night. Thank you, Mr. Weller.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, uh, Mr. Board President, members of the board, Dr. Carmen. I look forward to working with each of you and, and hopefully, you know, developing a relationship with each of you and earning your trust. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weller.
Moving on to agenda item five point six, discussion of possible action to authorize administration to retain a copy and/or individuals to provide budget training subject to board president approval of company and/or individuals. Ms., Dr. Carmen?
Yes, sir. Request here is from Ms. Lopez to bring in a trainer, uh, to go over budget with the, of the board as a whole. Um, I, I will mention, in follow-up to our committee meetings, that we do have the online trainings with TASB. We also have the Region One training that'll be face-to-face uh, this week at the Region One School Board Conference. Um, additionally, we had the opportunity to do the district orientation with our three brand-new board members. Um, and it seemed that instead of bringing in a trainer from the outside, they would have preferred a budget workshop with, uh, with, with Vicky Perez to go over our actual numbers. Um, so we have scheduled that for the twenty-seventh, the same night that we have, um, a special board meeting call to address some personnel matters. Um, so, we've acted on that, but, but I understand there's a request here from Ms. Lopez uh, regarding bringing in a trainer from the outside to train the entire, entire board on, on budget. So, that's, that's on the table for discussion.
Okay, I, before I turn it over to Ms. Lopez for her rationale, uh, I, I agree with you, Dr. Carmen, as far as a budget workshop with, with, uh, Ms., uh, uh, Vicky. Uh, she can provide us details as far as our school district and, and, and not in relation to anyone else. And so, I think that, that would be a benefit to all, uh, uh, former and new board members. But, uh, at this point, I will turn it over to you, Ms. Lopez, for comment or discussion?
Yes, um, some of the trainings that are provided out there, they are specific to certain topics. We as the new board members, uh, several of us as new board members and some that have been out for a while. Uh, it's important for us to stay up to date with some of the legislative changes, um, um, funds out, that are out there, you know, that are fairly new, as well as learn how to read these reports and audits and so forth. So, it's, it's important that Ms., uh, Perez do a training for us. I do agree with that. And, um, but her training is very specific to the numbers that are being utilized in our budgets. However, the, um, type of training that I'm requesting is a very thorough, overall training of everything that a board member needs to know for finances. Why? Because we as board members approve budgets. We as board members have to oversee the spending in the school district. And so, it's very important for us to be knowledgeable. Um, I have my master's in business, bachelor's in business. However, this is very specific to federal funds. If we don't know how to appropriately use these funds a- and what we're approving as board members, we can lose funds, you know? We can lose state funds. We can lose federal funds. So, it's important that we as board members get the proper training and maybe it's never been asked before, but I'm the type of person that's very thorough. And I, I am looking forward to receiving a training if the board, uh, approves for this.
Dr. Carmen, you said May the twenty-seventh to be the?
Yes, sir.
The training? I agree with, with, uh, with Jane, with Ms. Lopez. We should get somebody else. I think he's okay, but we should get an expert to, to explain all the details of the, of the budget.
So, if we're talking federal money, should we get Mr. Perez in the training as well? That way he can explain more of the federal monies to us?
The federal programs?
Mm-hmm.
Right, so Mr. Perez could, could train the board on, on federal programs. Uh, Mrs. Perez, when she does her workshop, will do more than just our local numbers. She'll explain the summary of finances. She'll walk you through the template, how it looks. Um, again, you'll also have a Region One training. The Summer Leadership Institute will have budget training. Um, you'll have trainings available. Um, post-legislative session, legislative updates will be available to you at our, at our workshops, um, already. Um, so it's very likely you'll get duplicative services if we bring a trainer in here. Um, I mean, you're open to do it, but you'll get the same training you're gonna get at the Region One, uh, training that's coming Friday and very similar to what you get with the legislative update, the Summer Leadership Institute and the, the financial training and budget training that'll be offered there. So, it's, it's already a part of our conferences, but, um, if the entire board would like to bring a separate trainer to go over budget, I mean, you, you have the option to do that.
I'd like to make a suggestion and, and board members, uh, uh, just hear me out. I, I, I think that there's a lot of upcoming trainings, both at, you know, at all the conferences, as you mentioned, uh, Dr. Carmen. Uh, and, uh, again, we've got, uh, some very good people working on, onboard with Ms. Perez and, uh, uh, the other Mr. Perez for federal programs. So, my recommendation at this point is, is let's, let, I, I would think it would be in our best interest to, to get the best, best bang for our buck and let's, let's get all the information that we can from our existing staff. And then, uh, board members, if we don't have, uh, the, if we feel that we still need to, uh, to reach out to, uh, another entity or another, uh, person to come and provide us additional training, uh, we can do that a- as well. But that's just my, my opinion. I'm open to your suggestions as well. I don't, I, you know, it's already on the agenda. You know, uh, we can also, uh, approve, uh, or authorize administration to retain a company, but at this point, we don't have a company in mind. So, we can still, we can still make the motion and after our training, we, it's already approved, so we can get the company in and get additional training if we see fit.
Well, Mr. Moreno, uh, I gotta, a comment, sir?
Yes, sir.
Um, I agree. I mean, I think we gotta use the resources that are handed to us. I mean, you know, uh, these terms are only three years. So, you know, uh, I know, I know Vicky's done a tremendous job. Uh, it's very obvious, you know, with our financial rating. Um, I think what, what we have to do as board members is, is support our staff. You know, we gotta support our, our Region One and TASB. That's the reason why we, you know, they're available to us. I just think just going and just spending money, you know, to me, I'd rather just spend that money somewhere else with our kids and our staff than just, just try to, uh, you know, become a, a financial specialist when, when we have our, our staff here that's already doing that. So, I mean, we have wonderful staff here. Once again, we have, you know, that, that can, that can teach the board members the, the information they need to know to make the decisions that we need. Uh, but at the end of the day, we empower our staff to do their job and that's what we need to do. We need to have faith in them. So, I, I agree with Mr. Moreno. I think we need to table this item and just bring it back at a later date, if possi- if, if necessary.
Okay, now, now with that, with that, uh, just to piggyback on what you just said, Mr. Lopez, do we need a table or, as I mentioned earlier, Dr. Carmen, would we be able to go ahead and approve this item just in case we do, uh, decide that we need additional training and we can just, we can research and bring somebody onboard? At this point, we're not going, we're not approving anybody. We're just approving the, uh, the action of, of possibly, uh, retaining a company in the future and it's already gotten board approval.
So, it's, it's unlikely that, um, it's gonna be over the new threshold of twenty-five thousand dollars, so it probably wouldn't even require board action. Um, if, if the board after, they've gone through the training and through, um, the Summer Leadership Institute training on, on budget, if they still feel there's a need, um, i- it would not require board action, sir.
Yeah, we can just table it. It doesn't, it doesn't matter anyway.
We better just table it.
There is a timeframe that we need to approve the budget as well. So, the sooner we can get the training, the better, if we can hire someone. Um, like I said, it's good that Ms. Perez is gonna be able to train us. Um, but, I mean, there's so much to budgets. You have ESER, you have legislative issues, you have strategic planning, budget compliance, state funding, audits, first ratings, school nutrition, debt service funds, understanding fund balance, amending a budget. There's so much to it.
Can we get that kind of training, uh, Vicky?
Absolutely.
Yeah, she already provides it, right, Ms. Vicky? Every single one of those items? Thank you, ma'am, that's the reason why you're CFO, thank you.
So then that would be like a full-day training or so?
We appreciate you, Ms. Vicky.
That's okay, sir. We can. Provide whatever training you'd like, ma'am. Uh, we, if we do a training elsewhere, it will be general information and it will not be specific to San Benito, and I can tell you, having worked in different districts, San Benito CISD finances are very different. They're a little bit more complex, and you're right, they do require, uh, extra attention. But all of that information, I can tell you that there's nobody better than our staff that can be able to provide that, that training for you. It can be an hour, three hours, however long you need for it to be, we can cover whatever bullet points you want. We can go from the state level on what legislation is proposing, how it's coming along with a timeline and when that will happen, and talk about what the local levels are doing from Region One to the district, and what we're doing locally within our schools and at, even at the campus and department levels, we can give you all of that information, how we do that, the timelines in which we do that, how everybody's incorporated into that, and it can be as deep or as broad as you'd like for it to be, ma'am.
Couldn't you offer, so if we do a, the budget workshop on May 27th, we estimate three hours or so, that's what they usually take, sometimes they take less, but if we do a good three hours, and then you still have individual board members with questions, you can still meet one-on-one with them, uh, based on their schedule, right?
Absolutely, I always welcome anybody that has any kind of questions to call me, visit me, whatever you may have. The one-on-one time is really beneficial, that is, that's going to be the one where I'm going to be able to focus exactly on what your concerns may be, so that you're comfortable with how you're, you're carrying your duties as a board member.
Okay, so once again, if I may, at this point, I'd like to move that we authorize administration to retain a company and/or individuals to provide budget training subject to board president approval or company and/or individuals in case the need arises.
We wouldn't have a problem with, with going that route, Doc?
Yes, sir.
We wouldn't have a problem, uh, approving, and then if we need it at a later time.
I think the question becomes, how do you determine if, if the need arises?
And, and what I mean by that, Dr. Carmen, I can be more, more, I can clarify more is, you know, as specifically after, after we're done with this training, and the upcoming training is May 27th, uh, you know, and we still feel, or, or board members, individual board members feel that that's not, that was not enough, they didn't get the, the answers they wanted, which is very unlikely, but, but still, it could happen, that we already have this in act, in, 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 uh, the process already ready for us to go out and look for an individual to come and provide us additional training.
So I, I think if you want the board majority to say, yes, we want training or no, we don't training, and it's based on the workshop on the 27th, I think we just tag it on to the special agenda on the 27th.
There you go.
And if you're still not prepared, you, you pass it that night.
I, I, I don't have a problem with that. So then I rescind my motion, and, uh, do I have a motion to, to table it at this time?
Second. Motion, second.
Okay, Mr. Lopez, uh, makes a motion to table this agenda item, uh, at this time, and we have a second. Uh, Mr. Corona, all those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. Ms. Lopez, no vote?
I did vote.
Oh, I didn't? You were okay with that table?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, 7-0. Moving on to agenda item 5.7, discussion and possible action to approve revisions to the board operating procedures. Dr. Carmen.
Uh, yes, sir, I think here, we have a couple of options that are up for discussion, if I can get my mouse to move. Um, one, I think we know we need to amend the board operating procedures regarding public comment, and then two, I think there is a discussion that is, is to be had regarding, um, spokesperson from the board on behalf of the, the school district.
So at this point, I'd like to just, uh, comment the fact that we do need to address the board operation procedures to, to reflect the decisions that we made earlier as far as BED local policy and allowing, uh, public comment, uh, and, uh, however, the other, the other item that was also up in question or up, uh, to be voted upon was the media inquiries to the board. Um, I don't think that, uh, that this update or revision to, uh, board policy BED is, is a question at this point, so, uh, we, I'd like to move over to that, uh, second one on media inquiries to the board, and, uh, the discussion was, uh, the way it is written that the board president and board officers shall be the official spokespersons, uh, contrary to the way it's originally stated, that any, uh, uh, media inquiries, uh, will be addressed to the superintendent specifically and/or board president. So at this point, I'll open it up for discussion.
So, Mr. Moreno, what you want to do, you want to change the policy to have it for the superintendent and officers, correct?
That, um, Ms. Lopez, uh, would you care to comment on that? Is that?
I would say to leave it as is, as it was already.
Okay.
On issues before the board, the board president and the superintendent.
Okay, so then, then, uh, we, we just, the only, uh, thing that we need to approve then is the only revision to the board operation procedures at this time. Uh, we, I need a motion for, uh, for us to revise, uh, the public comment section referencing BED local. Do I have a motion on the floor?
So move.
Oscar Medrano moves that we amend board operating procedures in reference to public comment. Do I have a second?
Second.
Janie Lopez, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, all those opposed, we've got one out, so it's a, uh, motion carries 6-0. Okay, finally, item 5.8, discussion and possible action to approve revisions, uh, to the 2020-21, uh, compensation plan. Dr. Carmen?
Dr. Cruz, come into the podium.
Good evening again, board. Uh, we are recommending the change to the 207 and 215 calendar, um, changing 207-day employees to work 203 days this year, and the 215-day employees to work 214 days this year. Um, those employees who have already started making up those hours as discussed in the committee, um, due to the change in the, the school year calendars and then the adjustments in the employee calendars, um, for our hourly employees, they will be given time and a half for the time that they have already worked, and then the professionals will receive straight time for those days over the 200, um, 214 and, I'm sorry, 200, three days and 214 days that we're changing it to.
Any questions, discussion? Okay, do I have a motion to approve revisions to the 2020-2021 compensation plan? Okay, Janie Lopez moves that we, uh, approve the revisions to the 2020-2021 compensation plan. Oscar Medrano, second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, motion carries 6-0.
Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Dr. Cruz. Next up, we have closed session. In accordance with Texas Government Code, Open Meetings Act, the board may move into closed session for the following reasons. Section 551.071, for the purpose of a private consultation with the board's attorney on any or all subjects or matters authorized by law, and Section 551.074, for the purpose of considering the appointment, employment, the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline or dismissal of a public officer or employee, or to hear complaints or charges against a public officer or employee. It is 8:50, and we now move into executive session. Okay, we're back from, uh, executive session, I call this meeting back to order at exactly 9:09. Okay, uh, let's go to agenda item 6.1, employment, resignations, and retirements. Dr. Carmen?
Yes, sir, I would recommend to the board that they employ, accept the resignations and retirements as discussed in executive session.
So move.
Okay, we have a motion by, uh, Oscar Medrano and a second by Mario Silva. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, motion carries 7-0. Item 6.2, discussion and consideration to reemploy probationary contract employees to include teachers, librarians, counselors, and nurses for the 21-22 school year. Dr. Carmen?
Yes, sir, I would recommend to the board they reemploy all probation, probationary